Mark is out of town, so Mark will excuse him tonight. And we only have two basic things on our agenda. One, oh, we got a picture. Look at that. Is that for Mark? One is a report from David Stevenson about the community councils and so on. And the other is we'd like to have reports from those who went to the National School Boards Conference. And we've asked them to share something that they learned that they thought would be helpful for our district. So David, we'll turn it over to you. Let's take it away.
All right. Thank you, President Hacken. Yes, it's springtime, if you didn't notice, which means school land trust plans, right? Part of the law is that we need to have a yearly training. And so here we are, holding our yearly training. I just want to recognize Karen Ashman, who has left her table over there, to this table for this evening. Karen and I, in the communications department, spend some time with the school community council trainings, the trust lands plans. Monday morning, Karen and I were at Saratoga Shores Elementary, meeting with the new principal there. And just a great opportunity, really, to get out into a school and, you know, see firsthand what's going on and helping a principal know the ins and outs of school community council. Looking at their webpage, looking at, we have that SCC land trust folder that we've shared with all of our principals so that they know all of the ins and outs, which some of those we're going to cover this evening. So Karen, if you'll just walk us through these next two.
Yep.
They have big words, so Karen's going to read the big words.
Okay. So the local school board is the adjudicator and protector of these funds that are intended to benefit the public school children of Utah in perpetuity.
So we have a little quiz.
So our quiz is, we talked about this last year, when it's called the School Land Trust.
Why is land in all caps?
Because it stands for something.
It stands for something.
Does anybody remember what the acronym is for?
Julie.
Do we have a prize?
I wish.
We have an extra packet of the.
That is not a good phrase.
Okay.
Last chance.
Help us out, help us out.
Give us the first letter.
Learning, okay.
First word.
It stands for learning and nurturing development. Did you have that, Sarah?
No.
Okay. So, you know, next year when this comes up again, we'll see if y'all get it.
I refuse to memorize that acronym.
You don't.
We've lost our title of the winningest acronym people.
People often wonder, why is land in all caps? I don't get it because it's, and a lot of people call it trust lands, just lowercase. But the correct title is land in all caps and trust.
Perfect. So next slide, we're just going to go over some of the things that we will be talking about today. We'll go over the 2022-2023 timeline, which you have in front of you. We also will go over the 2023-2024 funding allocation. So that is what the, what all of our administrators have been working on. We'll go over what appropriate expenditures are and what your responsibilities are. And a hint is you're going to be looking to make sure that they do appropriate expenditures. And then we'll go over the upcoming plans timeline that we gave to our principals to get these reports in to us.
All right. Thank you, Karen. So the timeline, and many of you were at some of the meetings that we held last fall. We handed this timeline out to all of the chairs, all of the principals. And you can see there that there are three major dates there with the little calendar off to the right side. October 20th is when they need to have everything on their webpage. So if any of you are perusing webpages, SCC pages, and want to let Karen and I know about something that we could help a school work on, please let us know. But those are listed there of everything that needs to be on there. And this is by state law, the date, October 20th.
And there's, there's some question about security and names and emails.
Sure. Yes, and that law changed. Well, that law actually changed. It used to be that they had to have their email addresses on the webpage, which led to at least four SCC members paying $500 or more to those scams. And so I think that's happened throughout the state, and the state finally said enough's enough. And so the law now says a means to contact the school community council members. And.
So last year, we suggested that they create a Google form that the board members would receive notifications on that would, where people could submit their comments to the SCC without actually giving out their email addresses.
And, I mean, I've been on a couple of websites, and they're still on there. But the important thing is, is that we have that chat every year. If you are going to put the email addresses on there, make it very clear to SCC members and PTA members, anyone who with email addresses on the webpages, dude, I will not be contacting you because I'm in a board meeting and need $500 worth of gift cards. Oh, and by the way, just send me the codes off the bat, please. Unfortunately, it's happened, like I say, more than once. Okay, then further down, you can see, so the items highlighted and bold with the orange, those are, obviously, those are the timeline items. The January-February section, you can see there that we have the stakeholder report and the final report. Now, that final report is for the previous year. It is kind of late, but that's, the portal to put those in, it actually went past January 31st, didn't it?
Yeah, this year was extended.
So we had to extend that date because the state website wasn't quite ready, but I'm, I'm sure next year it'll be fine. And then we have the plans due April 1st. And so those have come in. Karen read them thoroughly over spring break. And then supervisors are currently reviewing them for a second read. And then we're going to get them to you. And I'll talk about the timeline here in just a minute on when we'll get them to you.
Can I make a comment about that?
Certainly.
My, my impression has been the last three or four years that they are much better than they used to be.
Yes.
I'm finding fewer mistakes, fewer inconsistencies, fewer places where the goals don't line up to the budget, things like that. They're much, much better than they have been. So either your training is getting really good, or people are getting really good at writing that, but thank you.
They were so much better this year even than last year.
Is that right? Well, thank you for what you do to, to train and to help people write that because I've seen definite improvement.
Details are her superpower.
They are, and it's quite the process, really, to open a plan on the website for editing and then contact the principal and say, hey, you need to edit this, that, or whatever. And so as much training as we can do ahead of time so that we don't have to keep opening plans and having them edited, the more time saved. So it's, it's a kind of in the balance right now.
Well, I can see a difference, thank you.
You can tell when Karen came on, right?
I didn't say that.
Ten years ago, that's how much Alpine School District received, 3,875,000. Skipping ahead to 2018 and then through this year, those are the amounts that we've received as a district. Okay, let's do another prize opportunity here. Let's see who can get closest to what the allocation is going to be for next year. Stacy.
Dude, hold on, this is like a math pattern problem.
Oh, there's no.
There's no.
Eleven five.
Eleven five. Okay, and you guys are policing yourselves, so you gotta have to help find the winner. Julie, a guess?
Is this Price's Right rules?
Yes.
Yes.
If you go over.
Yes, if you go over.
Okay, I'll say 11,650.
11,650.
Ooh, you're taking my.
Joy Lynn.
Like, like 11,650,000 dollars.
I think I'm going to go over, but I wanted to say 13,600.
Okay, ooh.
Ooh. I said 16,700.
I'm going to say 12,200.
What'd you say, Sarah?
12,200.
12,200. Sarah Hacken?
I'd go 12,800.
12,800. Peta?
11,800.
11,800. Mark, do you want to chime in?
I'm going with 11,999.
Okay, here it is.
Julie's the winner.
Woo! Ada barely went over. Barely went over.
Okay, 11,753,000. That's, um.
I always wished for that.
It's awesome to just think of that.
I was hopeful.
It's all because you're new.
That is terrible.
We have the answer right in front of us.
Okay, so let's divide up the prize here.
Yeah, it's in here.
Stop it.
So last year, or for this current school year, that means every, every student, the, the equation is $129 per student. Okay? So that's going up to $137 per student next year. It's a great increase per student when you think of the number of students in a school. Our largest school last year received 346,363. A quick guess on how much they're going to receive next year?
Four.
Oh, wait a second.
She's trying to do the math in her head.
I'm going to say. What's the projection?
You are right on, prize for you. You get the prize.
It's right here.
She has the slide deck, and she's cheating. She's going.
Can you believe that, though? We have a school that is getting more than $400,000.
I live on the West Side, but yes, I can believe it.
Okay, appropriate expenditures. So when you get the plans, my suggestion is that you just have this sheet, that you have this sheet handy next to you as you scour through the plans. It just kind of goes through the, obviously, what it's titled, appropriate expenditures. And, you know, it's board members' jobs to make sure with the state statute that the plans are within the recommendations of the law, that they're appropriate expenditures. Next, responsibilities of local board, school boards. So these are some key components. This is from a training on the, the state website. I mean, that first bullet, does the plan address academic priorities of the board? Will they have a direct impact on the instruction of students in math, science, language arts, or other board priorities? That next one is the goal measurable, student-focused, and academic. The greatest academic need, you've heard that quite a bit.
So it's kind of like we need to be clear on our goals.
I think that would be nice to have everything aligned. Yes.
Okay, like strategically.
Yes, strategically. That next bullet, is it apparent that the goals have been written to address an academic need identified through a data review, an action plan to implement the goal, if they have behavior interventions? And we've gone through them, and none of them have this. In the past, they have. You can't have a separate behavioral goal. A behavioral goal can only be a component of one of the academic goals. That's kind of what that's getting out there. All expenditures should be accounted for with the action, in the action steps. So as you're reading the action steps, and then you get down to the budget part where they allocate the funding, they shouldn't be allocating funding to something that they haven't mentioned up here in the action steps. And that kind of hits on that next bullet. And so on and so forth. One last bullet there, this is a change for this year. They're no longer going to do the electronic signature. Karen put together a form that we have sent out to all of the principals. Everyone, it's an old-fashioned hard copy. Everyone signs it, and then the school is responsible to keep those at the school for at least three years.
Is that a state requirement or?
Yes.
Yes. It's always been a state requirement to have parents give a signature. Will everyone on the council give a signature? But it's no, they tried to make it easier, but I think it made it more difficult to try to get people to do it electronically. And so we've kind of gone back to old school on that. Okay, the timeline, what you've been waiting for. So again, the, the school submitted those April 1st. Our department has, we reviewed them. The school supervisors are currently reviewing the plans. And so it's not just read them in a day and then we're done and move it on. Read them, but if there are edits, then like I said before, we've got to contact the principal. We've got to open the, the form so that the principals can go back in. It's a great process right now, really, I think, with the principals and their supervisors to really look deep at the goals and, and find out, now, what did you mean here? And I think it's a great way for the supervisors to be able to offer support to the principals in the future with the goals, too. Okay, so that's going on now. How do you like my little word before April 25th? By April 25th, board members will receive the upcoming plans. Please review by May 5th and submit for additional edits as needed. I know that's a short timeline, but my hope is that with our review and the review that the supervisor is doing with the school now, that we'll have most things ironed out so that when they come to you, they're pristine. Okay, so then if you can have those back to us, and really, the ones that need edits by May 5th, the others I'm not worried about, obviously. But if we could have them back by May 5th, that'll give us four days to work with the principals to get the edits that you feel are needed because May 9th is board meeting. And we have to have them board approved by May 15th. So that's why we have the May 9th as that last day. And there's the pencils, that means it's the last slide. Any questions, comments?
Is the assumption that we read the trust land plans, land trust plans?
Thank you for correcting.
I still don't remember the acronym, learning something.
Learning and nurturing development.
Um, thanks to Karen. I'll just, I'll just point to Karen whenever I need that acronym. Is that we will read our own and not all 93?
Yes. Yes. So we're going to gather them back from the supervisors.
Well, I just like, but it's also one of these things where it's like, we're all approving all of them.
Right.
But it's also like, I'm, I'm depending on you to make hot, to catch the edits that need to be made and vice versa. So yeah.
I'm thrilled to have five less schools this year, so.
There you go.
It's exciting.
And if you really want to read them, I will print you a copy of all 93.
We have them available.
You know me so well, Karen, I appreciate that.
I'd be happy to do it.
We'll give you the printouts just because I think it's easier to do edits, but if anyone wants.
If you prefer electronics, we can send it out.
Electronic and all, all of them, we could do that.
I like to write on them.
I do, too.
Any other questions, comments?
Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
That's, that's helpful. We have been thanked. We will look forward next week to getting some more information from you, looking at those plans, and hoping that they are pristine. That would be lovely.
We hope so, too.
Like I said, they get there every year, so I'm excited about that. Okay, so we had a group that went to the National School Boards Conference in Orlando, and we would like to take a few minutes, give them each five or 10 minutes, whatever they need, to share with us some things, some sessions they went to and some things they learned that they felt like might be helpful for us as a board. So Mark, do you want to go first? Okay, while he gets the, uh. While he gets suggested, let's have he go first.
Okay. Well, as Sarah said, we attended the National School Boards Association. It was fun to go with Joy Lynn for the first time. And we attended a few classes together, but I, I'm going to focus on one that, I stayed the Monday, and nobody else did. So I'm going to talk to you about the jackpot class that I got. And it was called Technology is Changing the Way It's Changing Everything, presented by Jason Price, who's the Vice President of the Board in Western Placer Unified School District. So I have a handout for you guys. Anyway, it was, it was outstanding, and it was followed by a keynote speaker whose name is Adam Cheyer, Cheyer, C-H-E-Y-E-R, who developed Siri. But I'm just going to hit the major points there. So Jason Price said, we are living in an age of hyper-innovation, which, which by that he means that in the 1900s, it took 100 to 200 years to double human intelligence, and now it takes about 72 days. And if any of our technology people want to chime in here, that would be awesome. We have progressed faster in the last 30 years than the previous 200, 200 years combined. And they said that we are now in the sixth wave of innovation since the harnessing of water power and mechanization began. This whole class was about artificial intelligence. Artificial intelligence will increase our rate of innovation more than we have ever seen before. And they call it the flywheel effect, this building of momentum. AI, or artificial intelligence, has been around for years in the form of autocorrect or Grammarly or Alexa. But in November of 2022, ChatGPT version three was launched. And it is a large language model, and that means that it uses people language, not computer language, our language, that can organize and summarize information as well as create new content using predictive models. So in November, it was released, and by, in six months, they released the second generation on March 12th. And in that time, it connected to the internet and is 500 times the size of the original. So he asked the question, should we be afraid of this? He said many tech leaders are, and they've called for a moratorium on further development. But he said that we should not fall into two traps in approaching AI. The first, he called the techno-futurism, that is, an uncritical embrace of it. And he said if we did that, we might destroy our ability to write essays and, and you might go as, so far as to replace teachers. The second mistake is, he called it the lock it and block it, meaning block it from networks and insist on handwritten assignments. And he said also that that is, that is not the way to go either, that we need to control. That we need to control, that, that kind of response is controlled and dominated by fear at the cost of using AI as a way to tutor and improve writing. And we risk sending our students into a world unprepared for their future. So that's just a real brief introduction of that AI conversation. And I don't, I would, I'd be interested in what you are hearing out in the, in the real world about AI and about Chat GPT in our classrooms.
It is a real thing happening right now. Our students are very well aware of the opportunities to use that to their benefit of shortcutting assignments. It's, I mean, it's, I think it's used widely through colleges, through even into elementary school. Currently Alpine, we have it blocked on our network, where they can't access it on their machines. But they could use their home machine and use it. It's very hard to distinguish between some of the essays they can create from Chat GPT to one they would write. So teachers have to have a pretty keen eye on specific parts of the assignments and such.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you'd have to say, maybe have a sample of students writing in class and to go. No, I don't think so, right? I mean, you wouldn't be able to tell. I'm sure the teachers are, could tell the writing.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Nobody writes essays.
And this guy talked about how what our real challenge is, is to get, challenge our students to ask the right question of a GPT chat type thing. And they have to be discerning about, because it can be outdated very quickly. And what was the other, its grammar is not always great. But it does have some shortcomings. But it, it is getting more creative and more accurate all the time. And they said, you know, we thought that technology was going to replace the low level skills. He said, but we, we still need plumbers. But this GPT chat can create an essay for you. So it's kind of flipped.
Well, there's one comment that, that you shared on here that said potential of replacing teachers. And I, I look at that and I'm like, that's always the, when new things come out, it's like, oh, this is it. Oh, we had Canvas come out, or we had new online, or internet came out and it could be, you know, we have online learning. And there are great opportunities there. But I think what, one thing we did learn amongst many other things during the pandemic was are the value of teachers and the impact of personalities in their life and the connection, that human connection. And so I think our teachers are doing an amazing job of making that human connection with them. So all these other things out there become these tools that they can use and leverage in their classrooms. But our teachers are amazing, they're doing such a great job to try to build that. I mean, kids come to classes because they know their teachers care about them, they love them. They, they want to make sure that they're supporting them and they're learning too. And so this becomes another one of those tools that we get to experience and experiment with to see how it's going to benefit us while also giving students the opportunity to make progress in the learning environment too. So it's that fine balance.
He talked about how the pandemic really pushed us through a barrier as far as virtual content, virtual teaching and online content. And he said, this is going to be another huge push through that we're, we need to be on top of. And I, I mean, I could go further into the keynote speaker that we listened to. He said, he said, this is the most important talk I've ever given in my life to educators. That, that this tool, it, I mean, it could, he said, it could replace Google because this is better than a Google search. Because a Google search, you have, you know, you get a response, you have to sort through it and say, oh, these are ads. And this is not relevant. But this is very smart, the GPT is very smart and cuts through a lot of that. And anyway, it was just very, very interesting. So I would advise us to be on top of this and help our teachers to make use of it rather than avoiding it. Because as you said, our kids, and they compared how long it took to have a hundred million users of this app. In no time. GPT chat, Chat GPT surpassed every app out there. So it's pretty amazing.
Couple thoughts, thank you Scott for sharing that. I, I agree that we need to teach students to ask the right questions. We, I think we strive for thinking to precede the expression. That you can get an expression from Chat GPT of whatever you put, whatever variable you want to put in there. Hopefully, hopefully, we're building the capacity of our students to think about the variables that should make up the components to create the expression. And I think that comes from dialogue, that comes from interaction, that comes from deep learning. The second thought is that literacy is a key performance indicator in Alpine. Something that we stress, it's important to us and we value. And information literacy has been something that has been stressed as one of the most important literacies that we can develop in our students is the ability to process information. And I think with Chat, Chat GPT, that information literacy is not just about consumption of information, but the production of information as well and the ethics associated with that. And so it's just, it's a very interesting tool. I think we're trying to be wise about it as we gather information and process through it and say, how can, it is a tool, how can it be used for educational purposes in appropriate ways? How can it leverage the work we're already doing? Not defeat or destroy or disengage. It is an interesting phenomenon.
And I think our, our dispositions become, as you said, even more important, you know. If, if, if knowledge and content, I don't know, not that they're not important, but if they can be managed, how it's managed is pretty important.
Okay, and thank you, Edith, there's a lot to think about there.
Yeah, and I just, that was your, that was a summary.
The future is here.
A lot, a lot more.
Okay, Mark, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Would you like to present some findings from the conference?
Well, I was going to, but then I thought it would be easier to ask Chat GPT to summarize the conference.
And what did you come up with, Mark?
So it says, networking, the NSBA Annual Conference provides an opportunity for school board members to connect with other educational professionals from around the country. This networking can help board members learn about best practices, exchange ideas, and build relationships with others who are working to improve education. So that was probably my biggest takeaway was the people I got to talk to at the conference. And it turns out that a lot of the problems we were dealing with in the district are also being faced by other school board members. The second thing Chat GPT said was professional development. The conference offers a range of workshops and sessions cover a wide variety of topics related to education. Attending these sessions can help board members stay up to date on the latest research trends and innovation in the field of education, which can help them make more informed decisions about policies and programs for their schools. Doesn't sound pretty good. So in terms of professional development, I think that one of the best classes I talked about, I went to, I talked about social emotional learning. And a couple of interesting statistics. Eighty percent of student achievement is explained by students' SEL capacity. And there are many studies that show this. And so I think that's a really important aspect to address. Another interesting statistic, social anxiety is felt by seventy percent of students who wake up feeling dread. And actually, this also applies to adults too. And is kind of a post-COVID, they're trying to tie it to that somehow. But anxiety has passed depression as the most common mental health problem now. And so I thought that was interesting. Yet, another quote I really liked is, "It's within school boards' power to design new conversations in our country. The job of creating belonging, inclusion, and resilience needs a whole community, and school boards need to create that community." I just thought that was really a, kind of a ambitious goal for school boards. Anyway, I had lots of other interesting concepts. But I think a number of other school board members that I talked to mentioned that they got some pushback on social emotional learning. And suggestions they had were to create a profile of a graduate in terms of where they should be in their social and emotional state and then evaluate the progress. And I think we've tried to do that. Shane's been amazing in kind of helping schools to create goals along those lines. And they mentioned that if you use that data that you collected to evaluate how you're doing in these areas, that helps parents be more comfortable with SEL programs. And I, they showed several examples that I think were really good along those lines. So that's kind of, I went to several other talks on PR type concepts. One from George, actually Jordan School District from Utah did one. And I thought it might be nice to talk to them. Probably David already has, is in contact with them. But they had a lot of good ideas on, on how to provide information to particularly reporters and in a way that helps to fill up the district. So that's kind of my summary, but there's a few more if you want to listen to Chat GPT.
Uh, no thanks, I think we're good.
Yep, Mark, I think we attended one of the same classes, the one that talks about kind of that concept of it takes a village. And one of the things they talked about was forty developmental assets. It's a research set of data. And I found it and I have a printout of it. These are forty, forty attributes that if, if a teenager has these forty, they are set up for success in life and in a lot of different ways. So I just wanted to find that for myself, so I thought I'd print it out for you guys too.
Are these in any kind of hierarchy or is it in order or?
Yeah, there's twenty that are internal and twenty that are external, according to this presenter. These are protective factors that, and they said the average teen has nineteen of these forty.
Are these things that can be taught?
I have not studied it yet, so.
Well, it looks like some of them are things like, you know, if a young person is three or more hours per week in lessons or practice in music, theater, or art, some of that may be just the opportunities, not necessarily a skill set, but opportunities provided to them. You know, like activities in a religious institution. So maybe not necessarily taught, but are the opportunities there for them to participate?
I think these are very similar to the work that the United Way did a couple years ago. Some of those protective factors that family, community, and schools provide.
Built around belonging. Anyway, I thought, they look like a good checklist for grant hiring as well as teaching.
Do they have some kind of a profile or a survey or something where they?
This, this research is actually pretty old, it's two thousand and eleven. So I'd have to go back, it's called the Search Institute.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Joy Lynn, do you want to do the next?
Yeah, so I felt like I was drinking from a fire hose the whole time I was there. That there were always multiple sessions I wanted to be at and I had figured out how to pull myself in the multiple places. So since I've been back, I've actually downloaded all of the PDF supporting documents. And I've been slowly going through some of those. And the classes I chose to attend centered around my committee assignments and then also just being new to the board. So they might have been more just specific towards me. But one class just talked through governance and they talked about a strategic plan. And we got to kind of shine on there as I shared our coherence map with my tablemates. They were very impressed with the work that you guys had done and how the arrows go up and the arrows go down and I think the opposite. But just the work that, that we're allowing schools to have some autonomy and how they focus based on their needs, but that there are overarching goals and processes throughout the district. And so I thought that was kind of cool, just to be able to highlight to a small group of people, but the amazing work that you guys have done over time. The probably the session that I enjoyed the most was called, no, no, I lost it. Sorry, I put it in the folder for today because I wanted to share it with you guys. It's called Ten Practices to Avoid Liability. And I really thought that that was important to always keep those things in mind. And one, the first one was just to know what your boundaries of authority are, to make sure that as a board member, we're crystal clear what we can do and what we can't do and what's appropriate there. And then to focus on our role as a policymaker, that that really sets the parameters for the district and the safeguards for our employees into what they can do and can't do. So that, and that we adhere to discipline policies and we adhere to them unilaterally across the district that were very, that were always intentional and the same. And that way we don't put ourselves in a position of compromise because we avoided taking action because it might have been uncomfortable or not the right thing we thought in that situation. But the more consistent we are, the, the better that is. Even within that framework, though, also allowing some individuality for situations. But just really establishing that we're adhering to that consistent. And then a part of that was understanding due process. And when we think of the word due process, we should always think how much process is due. Are we really ensuring that the students and the families and employees have the process that is due to them and just really understanding that? And then understanding staff discipline process, really making sure that again, that that's consistent throughout how we handle situations. They had review and adhere policies on holiday celebrations on their, as their number five. And that's something to think about too, especially here where there is a dominant religion that sometimes we neglect or forget that there are other religious holidays and things that are important in a Jewish or a Muslim religion. And making sure that we allow those students as well as, I shouldn't say those students, I say all students, an opportunity to have that, that time to worship as it is within there. We need to be familiar with the laws governing our board meetings and make sure that we understand that process, that sunshine. It's called a sunshine policy in a lot of states, so sometimes we hear that here. We refer to it as open meeting law. But remembering that we only do the public's business in public and that when we're on emails and we do a reply all, or we start communicating back and forth, that, that we are then creating an electronic meeting. And that's especially important in today's world with texts are really important that as we receive information, that we're not responding back to it, we're just receiving it. When we start that response back, then we could create an electronic meeting. And then we need to open that up to the whole world and ensure that they have that opportunity to participate. And in our open meeting law, that participation is the ability to view it. So again, the ability to view and watch all of that in real time. So we just need to be cautious because those are easy things. Like I have a family text chain and it's, somebody says something and everybody responds back and we say, oh, that's great, or we heard it, or we exclamation mark, mostly in my family, we just laugh at everybody's comments. But as we do that, then we're in violation. So that information where all board members are in. But as we do that, then we're in violation. So the information where all board members are in, in the text or in the email, it, it, it has to be just a one-way communication so that we're not violating that. The other thing, and this was really exciting for me because I'd never known how to vocalize it. And it was a concern I had with our agendas. When we get to a closed session, that's just a way to handle an agenda item. It's not a separate meeting. It's part of our regular meeting. It's just how we handle that sensitive material. For instance, a, a personnel issue or a legal issue or a purchase, a property purchase or a security, those things that are outlined in code. So when we go to an executive session, it's just a portion of our open meeting. It's part of the regular meeting. It's just how we're handling that agenda item. So we probably need to make a better.
That's not clear, is what you're saying?
That we need to come back into the open meeting and adjourn the meeting at the very end. That people could stay, whether that's just we open the door and invite everybody that's still here to come back in so we can have a motion to adjourn. But it's not a separate meeting. It's part of its existing meeting. It's just a way to handle these selective setup agenda items. And so that's something we may want to look at. I thought it was really interesting because it's a question I've struggled with a long time and they were able to vocalize how that was. And it's like, oh, that's why it works that way. And they said to guard against nepotism and conflicts of interest. And I always believe nepotism can land us in really uncomfortable Thanksgiving meals. So nepotism from the board level and at staff levels and stuff, we just need to be very purposeful i- if we go into having to employees work in a building or if we have a family member that works in the district or, we just need to be very aware of the nepotism and those conflicts of interest. We need to understand ethical considerations for board members. Just making sure that we all understand what our ethical considerations are and, and what that ethics looks like. We should clarify roles of board members. And they suggested every time you bring in a new board member, that the whole group review the handbook and the responsibilities together. So we're always getting that refresher, that we just don't like do a one-off and somebody train the new person. But then as a whole group, we go through that again because that just reminds us exactly what's in our handbook. It's really easy to read a handbook. And then show the handbook? I once went to, I shouldn't say, but I went to a charter school once and I asked if they had a policy on something. And everybody looked at me like I was crazy and then they went and found a binder and dusted it off because it had dust on it and pulled it out. And we don't want our handbooks to be that way where they gather dust. We want to have them a living doc, not, a, a document we refer to and a good way to do that is just every two years when a new board member comes on to, to do a training on that. And then they said to plan your superintendent search very carefully, that our results are very much tied to our superintendent. So you may not leave. That's what I read into that one. And then another chain said that the success of a board and the success of the superintendent, you can't take them apart, that they are tied together in that relationship and how we work. So I was super excited. I'll probably learn a lot as I continue reading through the PowerPoints. I did learn in a couple other sessions that some topics that we struggle with and don't have answers on how to develop a policy around it yet. That's across the country. Everybody's grappling with the same issues and how to, how to move forward, whether it's chat GPT or just the whole list is how, how to deal with that, that we're not in an isolated cornerstone. So when Mark says, you know, it's an opportunity to network, I think there's a lot of value to that.
Okay, thank you. A lot to think about there. Dr. Farnsworth, would you like to add anything?
Some of my comments will be a second witness to what has already been said. I did go to the Alaska Association of School Boards. Want on positive stuff for their students, just a very different demographic and geographic opportunity that they faced compared to ours. They talked about making classroom school cultures that are safe, engaging and supportive. I think our key performance indicator of connection kind of brings those pieces together. Recently, last week, David and his team organized those student feedback opportunities. So we had students from high schools and junior highs that came and we spent an hour with them and got feedback on what's going well in their schools, what needs to be adjusted. And I would think those, the thoughts that were expressed there, as I went back and reviewed what Alaska is doing, I think those student needs are fairly consistent across different demographics, geographical areas. The kids do thrive when they're in a safe environment where their curriculum and learning opportunities are engaging the real world and where they feel that support from teachers and administration. I appreciate our connection goal and feel like that will go a long way in helping schools measure that and be intentional about improving that. Conflict resolution, lots of school boards and districts are dealing with conflict across the United States. The takeaway there is some strategies to channel conflict into cooperation before it escalates. That your chance of capturing that and staying in a productive dialogue is better if you have some strategies to deploy as soon as you send conflict. I think our principals do a great job as we have issues come to us or come to the state and we channel that back to the local level where they can get in a period of cooperation. We do a great job of being able to resolve that. We can attend to it quickly. Legal issues, in addition to what you mentioned, the LGBTQ accommodations is not something that I think there's clarity on at the federal level or state level. Those are areas that we're advised to be very cautious in as the case law is still being developed there. Counsel, anything you would add from your conference on those matters?
No, but they were brought up. So for, well, for example, you know, we have the different, different courts that ruled in opposing fashion across the, across the nation. So and that's kind of where it's a little bit tricky. Whereas some different courts have ruled one way and others have ruled another. So it's still a lingo until the Supreme Court is able to clarify that. And so far they haven't been willing to do that to date. So there's still some hope that maybe some cases will rise to that level and get some clarity.
And perhaps it was just me being in this role, but it's interesting to see that many educational issues are now politicized. And you see that depending on your state, you're going to have a different interpretation of what that should look like. Which is interesting in terms of policy. I went to two sessions on board superintendent relationships and board dysfunctionality. Or boards that said, hey, we have some dysfunctionality and here are some strategies we use to address it. Farmington Public Schools in Michigan talked about four areas they choose to focus on and get clarity on to bring their board into some unity. First one was building trust. Second one was getting clarity around communication protocols, how they communicated with one another, how they communicate with the public, how they communicate with the superintendent, similar to what Joylyn was bringing up with respect to what that looks like and what, what is appropriate there. The third area of emphasis was their governance model. They had a sheet that distinguished between what are Board of Education goals and what are district goals. And sometimes Board of Education members create district goals when their district should create district goals. The Board of Education should create Board of Education goals and those are very different goals. It was interesting. They asked a question rhetorically, how many employees does a Board of Education have?
Two.
Two. In some states it's one, but a district may have hundreds, thousands of employees and just the difference between there. And the last one, what do you think our board is attending to as well, these additional ones? That idea of board professional development and capacity building through conferences, through readings, through studies, other opportunities. Last one was Cape Henlopen in Delaware. They have some very good protocols on email, responding to patron emails and what they go through to determine have they included staff? Is this best responded to by staff? Almost a flow chart, if you will, on how to address those from board leadership, from other board members, from staff, who answers and what's the process to determine how that response should be. So I thought that was.
Can we approve?
I think we can clarify a little bit. I think we have, we've talked about the processes before, protocols. And it would be, I think, helpful at some time to delineate what those are and what that looks like.
I can just also report that our new national, what's the title?
President.
President is Christie Sweat. Christie Sweat from Salt Lake City School Board. And she'll be awesome. And we had a wonderful gathering in which we hosted other people from other states in, in our region. And anyway, I think it will be very interesting to have somebody from Utah leading in a speaking.
And I would say compared to other states, my perspective is Utah is a very collaborative, cooperative group with one another in terms of collegiality, in terms of collaboration. Yeah, that was, that was an enjoyable activity.
Okay, thank you all. I think two key things for me takeaway is, the statement that Ada just made is what can we do better? What can we learn from this? And the, the points that Joylyn made about being really careful about the law and making sure that everything we do is in the right side of the law. And making sure that everything we do is collaborative and helpful in the long term. So thank you all for your presentations. Thank you to David. And now we'll take a break and at six o'clock, we'll come back for our public hearing.
Good evening. Okay, welcome. It is always wonderful to see the room filled and to hear chatter and to know that people are working together to solve problems. So we welcome you today and we're glad to have you here. We're going to do two things today. First is a public hearing and so far we have 31 people that have signed up for that. So we will stay here as long as you are here and hear every comment that you have that is important to us. Following that, we will probably, depending on the time, take a 10 or 15 minute break and then we'll go into our regular board meeting. So, okay, we will now hold a public hearing to receive input from the public with respect to the proposed school boundary changes, consolidations and closures, or closures. This opportunity is for patrons living within the Alpine School District boundary. For those who have signed up to address the board, please come forward and line up in the order that your name appears on the screen. So there it is. That's really quite wonderful. And I'll try really hard not to mispronounce any names if I do, just correct me, okay? Please state your name and address before making comment. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes. If you are representing a group, then you will have five minutes. So it's either three or five. So please tell us when you come up if you are representing a group so that we will be able to set the timer accordingly. Before we begin, I'd like to make one comment on my own. We have had about 2,000 online comments. Every single one of them has been read. Every one. In addition, we have held six open houses and we've had around 800 people or more come to those open houses. We have had several board meetings. And so I want to assure you that what you say to us is being heard. We are reading, we are listening, we are noting, we are discussing, we are revising. We are here to hear you. So let's begin with Candace Gustafson. And if you would just kind of look at, the microphone is in the middle so that you can just face us. So if you'll just come up in the order that your name is on the list, we would appreciate that. Okay, Candace.
There we go. There we go. So first, we just wanted to let you know how much we appreciate. It has felt like a very collaborative experience for us. As a neighborhood, we wish to advocate to keep Violetto in the Belmont boundaries as reflected in the newly created Option B. The difference between the two options are small. Option B keeps Violetto in the Belmont boundaries and moves the apartments that are under construction behind Harman's into the Traverse Mountain boundaries. By our count, the number of kids in our neighborhood that are not currently participating in the French program is only about 10, with many quickly aging out of the elementary school. Looking at the district's projected numbers accompanying each map, the change only makes a projected enrollment difference of five kids up or down between the two schools. While this is statistically insignificant, it is very significant to us. My neighbors and I in Violetto have invested in Belmont since it was initially opened and have deep connections in comparison to apartments that are not yet occupied and that have no connections to either school. Voting for Option B and keeping Violetto in Belmont boundaries does not require a bus and district provided transportation because we do not qualify for a bus due to the topography of our neighborhood. Our steep grade and tight turns as our roads climb of the mountain has made us ineligible for a bus. We are already used to driving to Belmont. In contrast, the apartments that would move into the Traverse Mountain boundaries are within the safe walking distance to Traverse Mountain and have flat, safe walking routes to do so. If the apartments are put in Belmont, they would require a bus due to both distance and no safe walking routes. Having the apartments in Traverse Mountain boundaries reduces the required district resources. Another reason to vote for Option B, keeping Violetto in Belmont, is that Violetto has no safe walking routes to Traverse Elementary. We have steep grades, hairpin turns, and the lack of consistent sidewalks throughout much of our neighborhood, and walking safely is not reasonable for any elementary children. Option B is also important as it keeps our community together, where Option A would divide our ward and community in half. The Fox Canyon first ward is made up of 70% Lakeview, 10% Seasons Apartments, and 20% Violetto Neighborhoods. By separating Violetto from the Seasons and Lakeview neighborhoods, you're isolating students in this ward from the neighborhood peers that they are in communities with. Our topography has always kept us separate from the neighborhoods further down the mountain. Violetto is entwined together with Lakeview Estates neighborhood, which stays at Belmont in both options. Many of our kids don't know anyone at Traverse Elementary. Our community is very important to us and we want to stay with them. Finally, is the only neighborhood in boundary consideration that does not qualify for buses, there is a schedule conflict between the start times of Traverse Elementary, Viewpoint Middle School, and Skyridge High School. Since Violetto does not qualify for transportation for either elementary or secondary schools, it is not possible for us to be in two or three places at once. With final bell start times of 7:45, 8 o'clock, and 8:15, it is nearly impossible to get kids to three different schools at essentially the same time, especially when you factor in the amount of time that drop-offs require. There are many in our neighborhood that this scenario applies to. Due to how long it takes to get through drop-offs, elementary school kids would have to be at school excessively early in order to make secondary school drop-offs. Since we do not have the option of sending kids on a bus, this produces an undue hardship. Option B eliminates that conflict. Again, we're grateful for your consideration and collaboration, and we hope that you vote for Option B.
Thank you, Candace. Lindsay.
Hi.
Good job.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Muir. I'm a parent of five children, three of, or I have children at Rocky Mountain and Oak Canyon, and two more will be heading into Oak Canyon into the DLI program. My children are part of the dual-language immersion Portuguese program. Two of my children are fluent, and we do not speak Portuguese at home. My husband and I, neither one of us speak it. All that they have learned, they have learned from this program. And I wanted to come and stand, sorry, before you today. And first of all, say thank you for the program. Thank you for allowing our children to have this opportunity to be bilingual. It's amazing. I also wanted to say thank you for hearing us out as we have sent emails and messages and submitted comments on the website. We've felt heard with Plan B and Plan D. The importance of DLI staying at Rocky Mountain would, is, sorry, the importance of DLI staying at Rocky Mountain in its same place is huge. It's projected that they would lose 25% of our kids if we were to move to a different school. I think losing any of our kids, I think, would be a huge detriment to our program and to jobs, not just at the elementary level, but also at the junior high and the high school levels. I wanted to come here today to share an experience that my daughter had. She's a 14-year-old girl, and she was at the mall in Orem. There were two men. There was a Spanish-speaking man and an English-speaking man, and they were having a disagreement about something and they could not communicate with each other. My 14-year-old stood aside and she could hear them getting louder and more frustrated with each other. She was able to understand both the Spanish-speaking man and the English-speaking man and walked up to them and said, "I can understand what's happening. Can I translate for you?" She was able to translate for two grown men, solve their problem, and they both thanked her and walked away. This is what DLI does for our kids. This program will change this community. This program will change lives. It's making our children better and stronger people. I plead with you to continue to keep it at Rocky Mountain. The teachers are amazing. Mrs. Roden knows how to integrate the English-only and the Portuguese immersion kids, and she's doing a fabulous job. We just, we do need more English-speaking kids, English-only at the school. But Rocky Mountain is thriving with its Portuguese program, and I would just like to put in my plea today that you will keep it at Rocky Mountain. And thank you so much for hearing me out.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Hi, I'm Janelle Hale. I'm just a three-minute person. My address is 1115 West 1130 North Orem, Utah. I, yeah, I just represent myself. I came here to say something else, but I am saying these comments in the hope that no schools are being closed in 2023, but I, or the 2023, 2024 year, but I've heard that that's not going to be happening. They're all, there really will be two schools closed. Even the Sharon School or the other school are closed. I am concerned of who, who is giving information to whom? How are these cities actually helping the district decide the numbers, the projections on their 2027 or other, other projections? I've heard that Lehigh and Linden were not properly contacted to know the, how many projected children would be in that area. And so I'm concerned that, just in Orem, about all of these, these different schools, if a school building is closed and the land is sold, whoever it is, they might never want to build another school building on that. And these school buildings, some of them only have capacity for, what, 300? And there was a reason that that school was built for 300. It looks like, though, with you kind of being, Alpine School District and wanting to help everyone have an education in this, I heard 14 cities. I thought it was 15 the other day. But it's amazing to me that you are able to want to outreach to that many people. But as 1,000 students in an elementary school, the way it has to be done, how can this split start? Will you show us how this split starts? The Orem's cluster has a wonderful group called Latinos in Action. It's so helpful to Spanish-speaking students in the Bonneville Elementary School. I don't know if they go to other elementary schools, but they are crucial to help to these Spanish-speaking children so that they can learn. And I really hope that those little schools can help each other. The Latinos in Action helping the elementary school, and I'm sure they help at other schools. I really like how the school system is right now.
Thank you, Janelle. Crystal.
My name is Crystal Muehlstein, and I'm a parent of a child at Windsor Elementary. I have had children at Windsor for the past 10 years, and we love our school. It is truly a part of the fabric of our community. I want to thank the board and the district administration for Option D. I hope you vote in favor for the proposed agenda items for tonight. Though please know that I don't want to see Windsor saved for just one year, but I want it to stay for generations to come. Windsor's been around since 1956, and our community wants to see it stand for at least another 50 years or more. It is a part of Orem's history. Over the past six weeks, I have spoken with dozens, if not hundreds, of parents, teachers, and community members from schools all across Alpine School District. The consensus I am hearing is that ASD moved way too fast and had far too little thought and information pertaining to each school. I have had people call me, text me, and message me, asking me to speak up for them in their schools because they somehow think that my voice will be heard. I don't know why. I don't know why. I have spoken with parents and teachers from schools that were set to close, as well as schools that were set to absorb the populations from other schools. The rush you have put on this huge decision has caused untold amounts of heartache, strife, stress, and hardship for all schools and communities involved. I spoke with a teacher from Cascade Elementary today. Cascade is set to absorb much of Sharon's population. At present, Cascade has mostly full class sizes and only one empty classroom in their school, but in order to make room for all the students coming in, specialty teachers will have to lose their classrooms and most likely have portables brought in. I've heard this scenario from other schools who were set to accept kids from the three other schools that we hope will remain open. There seems to be a lack of communication and understanding between the district and each school about their capacity for students. In order for each school to have the number of students the district calls full capacity, they must get rid of specialties and other programs that use that classroom space. However, the district also says that making sure that every student at every school has access to specialties and programs is a priority. How can this be? These two goals contradict each other for the Eastside Schools. I urge the board and district administration to learn from this experience. Please involve principals, PTAs, SEC, city leaders, and the community in these decisions in the future. If that had been done in this situation, so much trouble could have been avoided. Myself and many other parents across the district have been working and putting in time akin to full-time hours in this situation. This should not be our job or responsibility. It is yours. You should proactively be seeking the school-specific input we have to provide. The view you have of this situation is from fifty thousand feet in the air, but we are the boots on the ground. We have valuable information that is imperative to the success of the district. We all want the success of our students and our schools. We parents are committed to working with you to achieve that. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Jordan.
Hi, thank you. I'm Jordan Muehlstein. I am a parent of the same children as Crystal. I'm also a longtime listener, first-time caller, so thank you for having me today. I want to say thank you first for the indication that the board is reconsidering the closures and the boundary changes, and I'm grateful for that reconsideration and the focus on explicitly following the law and those requirements. I believe good information, good decisions come from good information, and I think that an open and transparent information gathering process would be valuable and is valuable in this, in this situation. I've read through the proposed district policy nineteen hundred, which is titled "School Boundary Changes, Closure, and Consolidation," with its attendant timeline and review process. I like it. I like that it's open. I like that it gives a long runway for lots of discussion with the various stakeholders, and I urge you as a board to adopt that policy. I also urge you to follow that policy, even if it's not adopted yet, in relation to the proposed boundary changes and closures right now. There's a school of thought that if you present a bad option to someone and then later change it, then they'll be happy, you'll manage their expectations, and they'll have some goodwill. I do not think that's been the intent of the board, but I do personally feel more goodwill about the opportunity to address this. So I ask that we keep this goodwill going and the conversation open. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan.
Okay, my name's Jill Turner. I live at fifty-two east, fifteen thirty-five north in Orem. I am a parent of a child who attends Windsor, but we've been in the Windsor Boundary and in the school for the last eleven years, and I'm also the PTA president at Windsor. So I first want to thank you for being here tonight and giving the public the opportunity to comment. I want to thank you all as a board for recognizing the need for further study regarding school closures and boundary adjustments in our area. I'm grateful you are listening and making adjustments based on the feedback you are receiving. I want to speak to the process we have been part of over the past couple of months in hopes that future changes will be affected in healthier and more collaborative ways. In fall of two thousand twenty-two, our schools in Orem were disrupted due to Proposition Two, when our local governing body decided they knew what was best for our students, teachers, and community without asking teachers, parents, or anyone else associated with our city's schools. This was incredibly disruptive, hurtful, and traumatic. Then, a short two months later, we were again forced into a frenzy when the district presented a plan and the school board voted to implement that plan in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to close our schools without taking principals, teachers, or without talking to principals, teachers, staff, or parents. Even after the vote was taken, it was difficult to arrange a meeting with our school board representative to have a genuine conversation. While I appreciate the work and study that I know went into making these plans, I believe it is extremely short-sighted to think you can come up with a plan that best serves students without having spoken to and received feedback from the people who actually work in the schools and live with the students every day, their teachers, principals, parents, and others. A plan made strictly based on data and research is missing an essential component of real-life experience and day-to-day actions. In the coming months, as we continue studying possible closures and boundary adjustments, I am asking that the district and school board visit our schools regularly to share ideas and receive feedback. We want to strengthen our community and serve our children, just like you do, and we need to be part of that process. I encourage the board to keep an open dialogue with principals, teachers, and parents. We each represent a different perspective regarding the education of our children, and because education is ultimately about children, we need all of those perspectives, including yours. Please don't make decisions thinking you know best without regard to the stories and experiences of those on the ground. Thank you.
My name is Lori Searl. I live at sixty-nine east, fourteen thirty north, Orem. I'm in the PTA presidency also at Windsor. I've been the SEC chair there and was a volunteer classroom aide for many years there. My children have attended Windsor for the past twelve years, and we live in the Windsor Boundaries. I would first also like to thank you for your many hours of work and service to our school district. I would like to ask the board to slow down, to vote in favor of delaying school closures as listed on your agenda. I recognize the opportunities for feedback that the board has provided in the short-time period of this study. However, consideration of feedback should happen long before any plans begin. I know that there has been quantitative research on these schools for years, but the qualitative research has just begun. One school closure deserves tremendous care and qualitative research, listening to the voices of those directly involved with the schools, the parents, PTAs, and community members. If one school closure deserves such great care, certainly it isn't the answer to close five schools at once, four of which are all in the same general area. School closures not only affect the students, they affect our communities permanently. They affect the future demographics of our neighborhoods and our property values. As for the students, these are kids who have already faced setbacks from COVID, and their academic progress will yet again be negatively affected by having to move schools. As for Windsor Elementary, I believe that closing Windsor, using any of the current plans, would be inequitable and damaging to the underprivileged students. Windsor serves a unique population and provides unique resources that meet the needs of the students. Windsor Elementary is thriving and should not be closed. Its student population has been pretty steady the last ten years, and there are more houses being built in our Boundaries. Large parts of the building are newer and rebuilt, and Windsor has near-complete technology upgrades, from what I understand. If a school merger does become necessary in the future, Windsor should be considered for a site for the merger school since it is accessible to the underprivileged kids and safer drop-off and pickup in large volumes. It would be a mistake to sell such ideal school property. I think you have considered some of our feedback, and I thank you for that, but the plans are still not the best we can do. Plan C for Windsor is drastically different and better than Plan A. To me, this proves that an even better plan is possible and probable. I understand that the district is large, and there's much to consider. I ask you to consider alternate funding, to consider trying again to pass a bond, but ultimately, I feel that if you feel that you can't serve each school community the way they should be served, then I ask you to study a district split before making any permanent closures. Thank you.
Sam.
My name is Sam Scholes, and my son attends Lehigh Elementary. I would like to start off by expressing gratitude. Thank you to the school board members for taking the time to listen to our concerns. While I know that we do not agree on a lot of things, I'm grateful that the board is now looking to move forward in a way that will hopefully allow for more time to make sure that this process is done correctly and with respect to our teachers, staff, communities, parents, and children. With that being said, I feel obligated to speak about the disrespectful, unethical, and illegal way the district and school board have gone about the last seven weeks. State law requires that the school board provide a minimum of a hundred and twenty days' notice that they are considering school closures and boundary changes before making a final vote. These notices were sent out on March first, as confirmed in an email sent by Craig Brinkerhoff, the head of the district's legal team, on March twenty-second. On February twenty-eighth, Joylin Lincoln made the motion to, quote, "Begin the formal process in accordance with state statutory requirements of closing Sharon, Windsor, Valleyview, Linden, and Lehigh Elementary Schools and implement the associated boundary and program changes to be effective in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year." The school board voted to approve the motion six to one. The vote was incredibly premature and illegal in regard to Utah State Law five-three-G dash four dash four zero two. The district then began moving forward with the closure process as directed by the board, including reassigning principals directing PTA and SEC to not hold their annual leadership elections for the upcoming year and directing SEC to delay voting on land trust funds. They also directed staff and teachers to seek out new positions in the district and even went as far as Sarah Hackin telling parents that the decision was already made about the closures and their input could not influence that decision, only how the boundaries might be adjusted. This is all a clear violation of Utah State Law. On March thirtieth, the district added a timeline of the boundary study to their website, including a statement that read, quote, "The following has been reviewed by the Attorney General's Office," end quote. "We have since received communication from the Attorney General's Office that this statement was false and that they had directed Alpine School District to immediately remove it from their website." The illegal vote to move forward with the closure aside, our teachers and staff have faced immense amount of disrespect from district officials and school board members. They were told that they would have jobs somewhere in the district, but the logistics of where and how they should move forward were largely unknown. Their questions went unanswered, and their concerns were disregarded and brushed off. They have been treated as if they are disposable. Personally, I believe that our teachers and staff are the heart and soul of our schools. They deserve respect and clear communication from the district regarding any changes that may affect them and their futures. I would like to request that the board move forward today in a way that will right the illegal actions of the past seven weeks and in the best interest of our communities, teachers, staff, parents, and students. I request that the board rescind the February twenty-eighth vote to close our schools. I request that the board move forward with a motion to terminate the formal study of all five schools. I request that a boundary, a new boundary study be conducted to include principals, PTA, SEC, and other professionals qualified to make the recommendations necessary in regard to the boundary study findings, and that the boundary study use accurate current data regarding enrollment numbers, school sizes, et cetera. I request that the board be clear and concise in their plans to move forward from here. The motions made are specific and in line with legal requirements. While I recognize that the board and district cannot undo the damage they have done to their relationships with parents, teachers, and staff and community members, I am confident that we can move forward together in the best interest of all involved if the board moves forward with my requests today. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Carl.
I'm a little taller. There we go. I'm gonna walk the room here, sorry. My name's Carl Clark. I live in Linden, Utah. I have kids that go to Rocky Mountain. Thank you for your time and service. I have three questions and comments that may be characterized as lessons to be learned from this experience. The first one may be boring, but what legal advice is the board relying upon in taking the position that the appropriate statute was followed? The public record appears to show that the board ignored or refused to follow the guidance outlined in a proposed policy nineteen hundred, which was referenced by someone earlier. I assume that this was prepared internally by legal counsel. It contained good advice and a correct interpretation of the statute, including the appropriate timelines. Why did the board refuse to adopt this policy? My second comment is, the board created unnecessary contention among stakeholders. As one example, a teacher or parent at Valleyview or Sharon who was initially opposed to the closures may now be reassigned, or may be resigned to accept the change. So they made plans for the future, whether a job or attending a new school. If Valleyview or Sharon is not closed, these stakeholders might be confused and angry and resent the other stakeholders who are objecting to the change, even though the board is the one responsible for not following the right legal process in the first place. This is why the legal process is in place. And finally, earlier today, I reviewed some of the materials prepared by the district asking the public to support the two thousand twenty-two bond proposal. In none of these materials did I see a reference to the consequences for not approving the bond. The only inference is that new schools would not be built and upgrades to existing schools would not occur at this time. Nowhere did I see mention of school closures as a consequence. The board should have been aware of this and should have communicated to the public that school closings would be a consequence of not approving the bond. I have, I've heard representatives, you can clap for a second while I quit shaking. I have heard representatives of the district cite the failure of the bond as the reason for closing the schools. Be careful how you use this argument. I'm gonna switch hands because I'm shaking. If it is true, you should, let's see, if it is true, you should have told the, the public that the schools would hap, that the closings would happen when you sought approval for the bond. However, your own comments from your February fourteenth meeting contradict your agreement. There was general concurrence in your study session that these closures would happen with or without the bond. Which is it? Is the public to blame for not passing the bond? Or is the failure, or is the bond failure a convenient way to shift the narrative? Please be consistent and accurate in your statements. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Cynthia.
Now I'm the shortest one in the room, so it needs to go the opposite direction. Hello, my name is Cynthia Roberts, and I live at four ninety-six north seventy west in Orem. I'm here on behalf of Sharon Elementary School's PTA, SEC, and the community surrounding that area. I just want to take a minute to thank the board here and the district leadership for listening to our concerns and, whoo, try not to get emotional here, being open to suggestions and proposing Option D for the Orem area. I feel as though that the general concerns that we proposed for, specifically for our, for Sharon and what we wanted, has been supported in that proposal. Secondly, I wanted to specifically thank the, the meeting that was held at Sharon for us having a Spanish-only meeting. I don't know if many of the people here know, but a vast majority of our families are Spanish-speaking only, and being able to have a Spanish-speaking meeting that was held was a great support to our parents, and I wanted to thank you for that and having that as a priority. We favor at Sharon this new Option D as it makes our transition more simple, less disruptive to our students and our community. We recognize that changes need to be made and that we share in the goal to provide quality education to our children. We feel as though, being the smallest school in the district, that it is, at this point, inevitable for the closure to happen. I obviously feel, for the rest of you, that if it didn't have to happen, that would be great, but at this point, I kind of feel, we kind of feel that that's where we're at, is that the school has to be closed. Hold on, I'm trying to read my notes again. Oh, okay, so other main issues that we feel like, as you continue to go forward with this vote, to be aware of, is that we had two main things that we were really concerned about, and that was just making sure that our students are provide proper transportation and safe-walking paths with crossing guards to their new school, as well as making sure that it's critical and crucial that there's office personnel and administration who are fluent in speaking Spanish at this new school. Thank you again so much for your time and your consideration for our community.
My name is Christina Parker. My children attend Rocky Mountain Elementary School, and they are in the dual-language immersion program. I cannot speak of how beneficial this has been to my family. My son has ADHD, and I was so worried because of his intelligence that, I mean, that sounds silly, but he, I didn't want to put him with kids older than him because of socially, he was a little bit younger, as far as, oh, this is a bad idea.
You're doing fine. You're doing fine.
I went in, I heard of the dual-immersion programs, and I thought, my- I went in, I heard of the dual immersion programs and I thought, my son can be challenged, but he can stay with kids his age. And I, I love what has happened to my son. I love the support my children have received and the challenges that they have been able to overcome because of dual-language immersion, especially Portuguese. When I signed up for this program, I signed a piece of paper that said, I would stay in the dual immersion program. And if we move this school, many of the parents, or move the dual immersion program, many of these parents will not be able to keep that. If they sign something saying that they need to stay with this program, it needs to be something that's rooted and, and not moved around, especially in such short notice. I also am very concerned with all of the logistics. I have a kindergartner who would be going to Greenwood Elementary School and I applied for her to be out of boundary, to be with her other siblings. But I applied for that when it first came out and now there's other parents who are being told they can't do that yet. But I've already been approved. I received an email saying that my child had that approved, but I, I was told, you know, you can't do this a lot of times. Well, that makes sense to me. And now our school is trying to figure out where our kindergartners are gonna go. Are they gonna go PM? Are they gonna go AM? None of us really know where they're going. We, we have ideas, well, we have four different plans, which I support Plan B or D, but most of all, because of the logistics, I vote, I hope that you vote, that you slow down, that you listen, if you are really listening to us and not just reading our comments, that you slow down and give this more time. Thank you.
Clarissa, come on up.
Um, pessoal, eu sou Clarissa. I'm Clarissa and I live at 77 West, 225 North in Lyndon. I want to start by thanking you all for allowing us to comment. I'm so grateful for all that you do. I'm a sixth grader in the Portuguese Dual Language Immersion Program in Rocky Mountain I've been in the program for six years and I'm learning a skill that I wouldn't otherwise have the opportunity to learn. Being able to learn this language has given me and will continue to give me opportunities to grow and learn throughout my education. It's also given me a good challenge while learning at school. Right now, I'm learning science in Portuguese and I'm able to translate it into English. That gives me the opportunity to enhance my vocabulary and learn the words in both English and Portuguese. In our school, we have the opportunity to become more connected and comfortable with one another because of the, this shared language. This program has helped me develop through courage and confidence. Even though I mess up sometimes while speaking in Portuguese, that has helped me to know that it's okay to make mistakes. That has made me more confident in everything I do. Being in the DLI program opens worlds of opportunities for my future. Because I've had the opportunity to be in the DLI program, I'll be able to receive college credits in junior high and high school. Because I've had the opportunity to, to learn Portuguese, I've been able to connect with a diverse group of people inside and outside of the school. Inside the school, we're all connected because of the culture there. We understand each other more because of, we have this connection. Outside of school, I've had experiences where I've met and am able to interact with families or kids that speak Portuguese. I've also had the opportunity to experience and connect with a worldwide culture that is so amazing and unique. I've been able to, I've been able to become a part that, of that colder, culture. If I were to move to an area of the world that speaks Portuguese or a language similar to Portuguese, we would be able to understand and communicate with one ano, one another and I would be able to feel at home. I also want my two little sisters to have the same opportunities that I've been able to have. I have two older sisters that have had so many amazing opportunities that I would not be able to have too, if I wasn't enrolled in the Portuguese DLI program at my school. An experience that I've been able to have because of this, of this program was when my older sister and I were at a park. We were able to help a little Brazilian girl feel welcomed. We played with her and made her, made sure she was happy. Afterwards, her parents thanked us. If I did not have this opportunity, I wouldn't have been able to make that connection. Obrigada por seu tempo. Thank you for your time. Ciao.
I was, I was worried for a second that Clarissa was gonna do her whole thing in Portuguese and most of us would be lost. So, thank you for using your English. Okay, Aurora, let's hear from you.
So, that was my sister and I just gotta say, she was really nervous and I'm really nervous, but we both came here because we felt like it was important. So, I'm kind of here to talk about the DLI program, the Portuguese program at Rocky Mountain, and how awesome it's been for me. Right now, I, I started it in first grade and I've been going through, all the way through junior high and right now I'm in high school and I'm actually in concurrent enrollment for Portuguese, so I'm getting college credit. And that is a really cool opportunity. That's something that I'm gonna be able to carry with me on my resume and for the rest of my life. But more than that, it's also a skill that I have and a skill I'm able to talk to people in another language, which is really cool. And I'm able to go with, because Portuguese is a Latin-based language, there's a lot of words in English that are, have the same roots as Portuguese. And a lot of times, like in biology, where they have really crazy vocabulary words, I can kind of use my Portuguese to kind of help like, oh, that's similar to that. So, it's a skill that I use all the time, not just in Portuguese class, but like talking to people. And I think the people is definitely the biggest part of it for me because a lot of the time, like at a party or whatever, if I find out that someone speaks Portuguese, it's like instantly a connection between us. They're like, you speak Portuguese? That's so cool! And it's because when you learn somebody's language, you're not just learning the language, you're saying that their culture is important, you're saying that you care about them and that you're willing to put in that effort to learn how to talk with them. And it's really cool and it's a way that I can make friends and it's a way I can connect with people and learn about a culture that's not my own and that otherwise I wouldn't know a whole ton about. And so, my dad served his mission in Brazil and so he sometimes tells the stories about it, but if I hadn't gone to Rocky Mountain and gone through that DLI program and had all that connection with that culture, like I would be missing out on so much. Right now, I'm actually planning on going to Brazil for the first time next summer. It's a humanitarian trip, actually, and I spent all last summer as a lifeguard saving up money so I could pay for it. And I'm really excited because even though I've never been to Brazil, I feel like I already know so much about people, I know the culture and I know the language and I'm so excited. And it's such, this program has such an awesome opportunity for me and for so many other people, for our lives and for like ourselves as people to be able to have that connection and that culture. So, I know that there's like a whole bunch of stuff, legal stuff, that you guys are trying to figure out, but I just want to say that if the DLI program gets moved from Rocky Mountain, it's gonna really mess it up and, and people have been saying that already, but I don't know, it's really important that it stays and because it's, it's really awesome and I want other people to have that opportunity, not just for Portuguese, for other languages too, because it's really been changing my life and I'm going to see it change my life more in the future too.
Thank you, Aurora. Okay, Brittany.
You guys can just keep it going, it's okay. My name is Brittany Lentz. I live at 82 West, 1720 North in Orem and I serve on the PTA Board at Aspen Elementary. I appreciate the time and dedication spent on this issue by the board members and district employees. Everyone I spoke to at Aspen was very grateful you pivoted away from Plan A after extensive parent feedback. Thank you for seeking the best outcomes for schools throughout the district. The majority of as, of families at Aspen Elementary live in Lyndon and the rest are in Orem. Our PTA Board members are hoping to welcome more families into our boundaries with the changes happening this year or next. Because we have so many Lyndon residents already in our boundaries, incoming Lyndon Elementary Schools would be joining their friends and neighbors at Aspen. We have open arms and are excited for new families to join us. We would love those parents to come to our PTA meetings, meetings and help us preserve or adopt new traditions so they feel at home. Thank you for your courageous service to our communities. I know it can be mentally and emotionally exhausting. Many of those who benefit most from your work aren't old enough to recognize the impact of your work. Thank you for dedicating your time, energy, and attention to their development and well-being.
Thank you, Brittany. Priscilla. While Priscilla's coming up, I just want to say, it's so nice to be able to put a face with a name because we've seen your names and, and many of you who are here have been very active in the schools and it's just a joy to be here with you. Priscilla, go.
Hi. I'm Priscilla Prestes. I'm the teacher of the DLI program secondary, middle school, Okanagan, and also a mom. I am a Rocky Mountain mother today. And I came here because I learned from this process that people is not educated about the advantages of DLI as much as they should. And I was ready to come and teach some stuff, but my students already did. So, maybe you should bring your students more and that was awesome. But what I want to say is, yesterday I saw in the Alpine School District, they are recognizing one teacher on DLI teacher, middle school, who has the 90% pass rate in the AP Spanish test, which is awesome. And I just want to brag a little bit, Portuguese immersion, AP pass rate is 100%. And not just that, 70% of my students are passed with the highest score, score possible, five. Aurora be one of those. And the thing is, our program is super strong at Okanagan High Middle School. And one of the reasons is the convenience close to Rocky Mountain. So, most of the families, they, it's convenient to them to drive their students to Okanagan and Rocky Mountain because it's a walking distance. After school, most of our students just walk back to Rocky Mountain to pick up their older, younger siblings. And moving our school will make the hard decisions for our parents to decide which one of their kids are still in the DLI program. Because the driving both schools different times will be impossible for many of them, including me, my own daughter, who is autistic kid, driving in Portuguese and keep her heritage language. I will have to move her because I cannot drive her because our times will not, will not coincide anymore. And being a teacher in this district, many times I feel very disrespectful to know the news from my students and teach, and my parents. I was teaching when the email come about a Plan C and I have to leave class crying because I feel like stabbing my back. So, we need to improve our communication. I also ask you to stop and we, we can't talk more, we can't have more conversations. And just to finish, I want to say to Mark Clemente, what comment he said, no, it's not better for heritage students to be in a just English class and this is derogatory. They have the right to keep their language and culture and they actually scientifically, the research shows they perform better in English than their peers who do not attend DLI classes. So, it's better for heritage and the, DLI students also auto-perform in all state tests and this is research. Thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla.
My name is Heather Frye. I live at 1927 North 205 West in Orem. I have moved there, I've lived in Orem since 2007 when my children were in the Spanish Immersion Program at Rocky Mountain Elementary. I've been enormously fortunate to have so many choices for my children because of the luxury of a husband and a family who are able to accommodate these choices. My children have been in ASD since 2001. My youngest is now a senior in high school and I really have no dog in this fight. But I do fight for those who cannot speak for themselves. I fight for those who may be too afraid, who may not have the courage, who may not have the audacity that I have to hold our elected officials to the standards of law and legal practices which you all have egregiously violated. How many remember the classic, Velorax? Do you remember the calamity that befell the character of the wonsler, high in his tower at the end of the show, at the end of the story? After ravaging the land for profit and gain, the status and acclaim, he was left with a legacy of devastation to a land that had been rich with variety, vibrancy, and vitality. I know of a group who have mobilized to file lawsuit against the Alpine School District. I know that there have been options proposed to assuage the plaintiffs who are with Lehigh, Lyndon, and Windsor. I am here to speak for those who may not have the luxury of courage and integrity. When faced with the Goliath and Philistine army that is the Alpine School District and its administrative arm, because I have been given much, I too must give. There are a majority of non-Egyptian speaking parents whose children attend Sharon and I know, I believe, that they are bound by fear, resignation, and the propaganda juggernaut that is the ASD Board and Administrative Board. Like Velorax, I speak for them, those who are unable to speak for themselves, especially the children and families most powerfully affected when you, metaphorically speaking, tear down all the trees, when you take away their land, when you take away their opportunities for their breakfast, for their opportunities for after-school programs. All of those are at risk. The flippant comments made public at the meeting in February reveal the truth. You are the wonslers who seek status, acclaim, and ignore with impunity the pleadings of your constituents. I am fully prepared to file suit against Alpine School District unless and until you agree to terminate all closure and boundary proposals that have been pursued illegally. This entire process has been tainted and risks establishing dangerous precedent. I have hope in the board. I have hope in the district. I have less confidence in the administrative arm of the ASD. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Carson.
Hi there. Carson Teigen, I'm from Pleasant Grove and thank you so much for your time and willingness to, to hear us out. I am speaking on behalf of a collaborative effort from multiple parents and families within the Valley View Elementary School boundaries. The proposed plan on consolidating Valley View and moving us as a whole community is accepted by many of the parents. However, there are some concerns about the timing of the consolidation and details that are unknown that leaves us feeling unsettled. That would be awesome. Thank you for catching that. However, there are some concerns about the timing of the consolidation and details that are unknown that leaves us feeling unsettled. Some points we want to speak on are as follows: timing, building accommodations, trailers, buses, start time conflicts with the high school, life skills, and communication transparency. We feel like the decision to consolidate Valley View has been a rushed decision and may not be the best plan for all involved at this time. The current proposal is to move all of Valley View to Central, but then some of Central students' population is being moved to Grovecrest. From our understanding, two years ago when Central was rebuilt, it was designed from the layout of Grovecrest to help with the growth that may ra, may arise without using trailers. It appears there wasn't consideration taken into account where the space center is currently, which loses that square footage of additional classrooms. The proposed plan to move Valley View to Central is going to require trailers. When upon the rebuilding, it was made known there wouldn't be, wouldn't ever be trailers on the property because it would be against code. And from our understanding, the trailers will replace part of the outdoor basketball court. The current playground equipment at Central supports the approximate student body size at Central, but there's not nearly enough, enough room once the student body is doubled, especially if the trailers will be replacing some of the said playground equipment. We have not seen any plan for busing options for our students. As of right now, with the boundary adjustment, our students that live on the most eastern side would have to walk a distance of about 1.9 miles or about 40 minutes to get to Central Elementary. Some routes either do not have full sidewalks or along busy roads, even a combination of the two in some cases. Will there be any crossing guards? From our understanding, crossing guards are provided by the city. Have you been in contact with the Pleasant Grove City with the needs of how many crossing guards are needed? Additionally, we also have concerns regarding the start and end time of both the high school and Central Elementary. Both start and, start and end around the same time with no current information on any busing options. We fear the potential dangers, potential dangers of combination of young students walking to and from school and inexperienced new drivers trying to reach the high school in time may result in a fatality. The safety of the students should be a number one priority. Even with a crossing guard, high school students will be on the roads, from speeding to distracted driving. From speeding to distracted driving, a child being hit is a high concern of ours. Central Elementary parents have said that it is impossible to cross 200 South when school is over because of the high school students. The entire Valley View population lives across 200 South. With no buses, there will be an exorbitant amount of traffic which could lead to reactive decisions and traffic accidents. Another concern of ours is we don't know where our life skills classes going, and that should be close to the number one priority for the stability of those students. The current plan is to move all of Valley View to Central. The life skills plan is part of Valley View, and we won't be the same without those students coming with us. We are fully integrated with those students. The eventual consolidation of Valley View may be inevitable, that is, unless you guys change your mind. We would love it if Valley View was kept open. But if that's not an option, we propose the board to consider to hold off on this decision, to take more time to study all of these variables, to make an adequate plan and decision instead of what feels a little bit like a rushed decision. One option would be to plan a new build of an elementary school to place all of Valley View and all of Linden together. In doing this, it would solve a lot of these issues. Plus, it could plan on building a school big enough to accommodate those students and save the communities from being broken up and continue the programs our schools have to offer. The proper procedure requiring 120 days from the first notice of specific schools and boundary changes, in our opinion, has not been followed. The December notice wasn't specific on the detailed information of the study. When plans are rushed, the results tend to have overlooked details, even major ones, sloppy execution, dissatisfaction from affected parties, and oftentimes even increased cost. A rushed project specific to a school consolidation can also have a major impact on the physical, mental, and emotional safety of children. We would like to see more transparency on what you are thinking. We think what, what makes these closures so emotional is that there was no communication that if the bond didn't pass, then what? Maybe we can all work together to create a unified school district of better communication and more thoughtful decisions. Valley View has been through so much within the last couple of years, from a new principal change every year for the past three years, then COVID, the proposal to close the school just a couple of years ago, then not moving forward with that, and now we are moving forward with it. We just need some stability and want to see this through and that the decision is well thought out and the students won't be displaced in a couple of years to come because of what we feel is a rushed decision. If you are 100% confident that this is what the right decision for our students, we support you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carson. Briann.
I've rewritten my notes about seven times, so we will see how this goes. I am Briann Christensen. My address is 286 East 1660 North in Orem. And I, like many others, am grateful for the response and the, the reflection of listening and, and pivoting to many, to many, much feedback. And at the risk of sounding ungrateful, I am here to say that I believe it is not enough yet. I would like to share some data, I think mostly from research. Research shows that low enrollment and low performance schools that are targets of closures are disproportionately housed, they disproportionately house low income and minority families. And that has been my main concern with the, the school closures in Orem specifically. I'm very happy to have seen that, that the Windsor proposal has been pushed out, but I am concerned for those students who still live in the Sharon boundaries. And I know that there is definitely needs for, for improvement and for change, but they just, as some information, the Sharon Park in community has a median income of $37,000 and more than 50% Hispanic. As, just for reference, Orem city residents has 17% Hispanic population and the median income is $78,000. So this is clearly an area where there are unique needs in our community. There are several, there have been several research, there's been lots of research done on the effect of school closures on communities and students. And I have emailed some of these to all of you. Just in the one minute I have, there was, in 2013, the Chicago Board of Education voted to close 49 elementary schools. And the community was, was assured that they would be saving millions of, hundreds of millions of dollars and that their students would receive an improved and more efficient public education. However, in reality, this was untrue. 87.5% of the students impacted did not move to significantly improved schools and some went to worse off situations. Also, an audit done on the Washington DC school district closures found that while the education, Board of Education estimated $9.7 million in costs of closing schools, the actual cost was closer to $40 million, when in taking into account the cost of demolishing buildings, transporting students, and the lost value of those buildings and among other factors. A study conducted by the Pew Charitable Trust in 2011 found that cost savings when closing schools is limited in the short term, short term. So I'd love to do a deeper dive into these statistics with you as part of, as well as the, the solutions, which include investing in these neighborhood schools instead of sending them to other schools that are in existence. And I second all of the requests by Sam Schulz. So thank you very much for listening.
Thanks, Briann. Kristin.
I thought I'd have something to hold on to. I'm Kristin Miekom, and I am a parent of three Portuguese dual-language immersion kids, two at Rocky Mountain Elementary and one at Oak Canyon. And like Lynn Muir mentioned earlier, my 13-year-old, who is fluent in Portuguese, has been able to understand and also help translate not only Portuguese, but Spanish, Italian, and French to help his community. And this program is thriving and it's changing lives. I live in the Rocky Mountain boundaries, so talk of uprooting my kids from their neighborhood school and a thriving program and culture that we have come to love and support has been devastating. From my perspective, as well as all dual-language immersion parents and future DLI parents, when you propose uprooting DLI programs in these kids, it looks as if DLI programs are not a priority to the Alpine School District. And that these kids do not have the same support as other children under your stewardship. These children are not expendable or outsiders. They do belong. And if I were a parent deciding to send my child to a dual-language immersion program, I would see these actions of uprooting them as not having commitment from their district. So when my family decided to start the Rocky Mountain Portuguese program eight years ago, it was a bit of a sacrifice. We knew commuting a long distance was not possible for our family. We didn't know anything about the Brazilian or Portuguese culture, and we weren't sure that we could commit to living in Linden for the six years we were signing the agreement that stated, "The student will be expected to continue with this school's," all in caps, "program through sixth grade." That we signed for my son's admission and then our subsequent children. We have had tempting opportunities to move, and yet we have stayed committed to Rocky Mountain Elementary's Portuguese dual-language immersion program and to our side of that contract. I would hope and expect that the contract works both ways. I know many other Portuguese dual-language immersion parents, if not all, who have made considerable sacrifices to either move or commute to make this a thriving, successful program and to keep their end of the contract. I did want to say there's a precedent or a model we can look at handling perpetually expanding or contracting boundaries in proximity to language or cultural programs. The Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints does not haphazardly move their language or cultural wards, branches, or stakes as the surrounding areas expand or contract. Even though many who rely on these are technically out of boundaries and commute to these programs, they keep these strong communities intact and they give them a permanent home. I'm just asking that you give us a permanent home with our dual-language programs.
Tricia. My name is Tricia Kauk. I live in the Fieldstone Creekside area, and I am here for that area. A lot of them couldn't be here tonight, so I will be representing all of our area. The last month and a half has been super overwhelming, stressful, and exhausting. After the meeting in March, I think it's safe to say that we were all caught off guard. I can say for sure that Linden Elementary was completely caught off guard. Our school, while it does need some work, is thriving. The kids are thriving, Linden's test scores are great, and the teachers are amazing. Our administrators are also great. They're supported by the community, and no one saw this coming. We got an email letting us know that the school district would be reviewing boundaries. In all honesty, it makes sense. The school district has blown up in the last 10 years. Alpine School District has one of the highest numbers of students in one school district. I do not think that anyone took that email to mean that schools would be closing. And yet here we are. Within a few weeks of that email, we found out that our school was closing along with many others. Thursday, we all took a sigh of relief, the board was going to keep us open one more year. And then the next day, or sorry, one more year so that we could figure all of this out. And then on Friday, Plan D came out, and we were all in shock. There was a study done at Harvard University called the Three Principles to Improve Outcomes for Children and Families. These principles are reduce sources of stress, support responsive relationships, and strengthen core skills. All of these apply here. I'm just going to focus on the supporting responsive relationships. This is not, and that, that test, that report doesn't even take into affect the effects that COVID has had on our students and the changes that they've had to face. With Plan A, these three things would not be an issue. We would be able to have moved with, as a school, with our teachers and students together. While there would be change, they would have a lot of help and familiarity to help them make the change, and it would still have the same sense of community. As plans continued to come out, we lost the opportunity to move as a whole school and stay with our teachers. Specifically, West Linden, in all but Plan A, we were being divided off from our school community, Plan D being the worst. Our school is staying open, and yet we are not allowed to stay. We're current students, and yet there's no room for us. It's like your child is helping to throw a party and somehow finds out, finds themselves excluded from that same party. How do we explain that to them? How do we tell them why they're the only ones that have to move when all their friends are staying? This is not beneficial to our children. Many of these boundary changes are for future plans, specifically in West Linden, where being moved and grouped together for a future school that may or may not be built in our area, in the Creekside area. While moving, some of the families in the newer areas, developments in our area has worked for many families. Our families have, the Creekside, Fieldstone area has been in the same place for 15 to 20 years. Our children have started school at Linden. Our older kids have graduated. I have four kids. Two of my kids are now in Pleasant Grove High School. My son graduated last year from Linden Elementary and went with Ms. Ross over to Oak Canyon. And my youngest is currently in fourth grade, so she would be a fifth grader next year. They've built their communities here, their friends are there. They helped to create that Linden magic we've all heard of, and, and now they're being told that they won't be able to benefit from it. I know that there is a thought that these changes are setting us up for the future, but we feel like maybe we're looking too much at the bigger picture and not how these changes are going to affect the current students. While that new school is a great idea, it's not currently in any plan to be built. And while that might be a great option once the school is there, my student won't be benefiting from that, but will be the one who's being removed and facing all the changes and the upheaval of that future someday school. Our kids have been at Linden Elementary for years. They started there. This is their community, these are their friends, and they want to be able to stay with them. And we, as parents, want them to have the opportunity to grow up with them. We are grateful that you are listening to our feedback, but feel like this was all done too quickly. We need time to look what, what really needs to be done and how to make the best changes for everyone. We would ask that you can slow down this process, at least by giving us that year, but also allowing current students to stay where they are now. And would even ask that the plan that will be, can be found to allow them to stay together as a community as a whole, even if for some reason our school cannot remain open. We would also like to be able to continue with the option for our kids to ride a school bus. If they can have a bus to Aspen, why can't they continue to have a bus to Linden Elementary? We do currently have two buses, and we can move down to one, so that will hopefully help out. Thank you for listening to us, and we appreciate being heard.
Thank you, Tricia.
My name is C. Ongali. I am a resident in Linden, and I'm speaking on behalf of every Brazilian parent who can't speak here because of language barriers. I have four kids, hopefully five and maybe six in the future, attending a dual-immersion program. And I'm speaking on behalf of these people who want to keep this program at Rocky Mountain. Now, as I speak for them, I want you to understand, I'm going to, you're going to get hit up with facts, and if you said you have read every comment that we have made on Facebook and Instagram, you have the facts. So I'm going to tell you how a lot of us feel right now. You blindsided us. Do you know how annoying it was to wake up in March and to read on the, on the news and Facebook to say, "Alpine School District are closing schools and they're going to throw the dual-immersion program at a different school," and this vote happened six to one? Do you know how we all felt? Did you even consider asking parents their input? Did you consider asking teachers and principals their input? You didn't. Do you ever come and visit these schools to see what a great program that is? Secondly, to receive this type of question, I don't even know who this person is, but to see this type of question just shows the ignorance of what is happening. Someone named Mark Clement wrote, "How do we effectively mix dual-immersion with inbounded students so they both have a quality experience? In some cases, the dual-immersion was brought into a school to increase enrollment in that school." We know that's false. Is this the best practice? Is dual-immersion the best option for heritage speakers or native speakers? Wouldn't it be better for them to have English all day? Do you know how incredibly racist that sounds? And, and second off, to have an option that's going to take Spanish dual-immersion and Portuguese dual-immersion and throw them in one school in Aspen, do you know what that feels like? It feels like you're hurting Japanese people during World War II. That's how they felt. These are parents who speak Portuguese and cannot come up here and express this to you guys because they don't speak English. You're hurting us into one place. That's what it feels like. Did you consider our thoughts and feelings? Okay? We feel like we're being blindsided, you're not listening to any of the parents, you're not even listening to your principals. It feels like the Orem-only school district. They spouted out facts that were all false, did their own independent study. You know what that independent study feels like? Like a type of political party who studies themselves to make sure that they're not in the wrong, only to come out with the outcome that they're not in the wrong. We want an independent study done. We want the program to stay in Linden. If you move that from Rocky Mountain, Rocky Mountain Elementary, you have to consider, are you going to move it from the junior high? And if you do, those kids won't move. They've already started extracurricular activities such as arts, band, music. I've asked my own children who are here, if they move your junior high, are you going to go with the Portuguese program? Some of them have said, "I don't. I now have choir, I have other things." I'm asking you to please consider the feelings of many of the Brazilians who are here who cannot speak for themselves. You've blindsided them, and you've made them feel like second-class citizens, and that shouldn't be what Alpine School District is.
Thank you, C.
First of all, I want to add my voice. My name is Rochelle Rainey. I live at 37 East 1300 North, if I can remember my address at this point, in Orem. First of all, I want to add my voice to every single individual who has spoken so far. I feel that they have represented me and my husband's thoughts exactly over the past few weeks. My children, and my children and our unknown future with DLI when we committed to stay in the program, those who aren't able to represent themselves, unlawful and unrespectful action taken, the forced rush decisions and their impact on the future because of the lack of time to vet. I hope that the board will continue to seek for understanding and insights regarding decisions and impact that they've made on our communities far into the future. When it comes time to rebuild other schools in the area, I hope you're considering the logistics of how it will work if schools are already at full capacity with trailers and the remaining space has been repurposed in 10 years. This Windsor Elementary site is important for our community, switching subjects here, because of the diversity and because of the diversity and mixed demographic. We're able to complement and support each other as students and parents in our community. I hope that as representatives of our children, that you will continue to improve your transparency and communication, that you will find ways to support our stable and amazing Orem community whose needs are very, very different than those of our neighboring, our neighbors in extreme-growth communities. In order to regain our trust, you must meet our needs and not blindside us by decisions that are so drastic. I plead with you to slow down and involve the community as we come up with a better way. As I sat in my seat tonight, I couldn't help but look at the sign behind you. I read that book this year, The Power of Moments. And I get it. I felt inspired through the whole entire book. And you have an opportunity right now to make this moment better, way better than it has been for all of us over the past few weeks. Take this opportunity and make this a moment like your, like your focus says that you will. Thank you.
I want to second everything that's been said as well tonight. So many wonderful parents here who are giving what we've all felt for the past few weeks. My name is Sarah Lewis. I also live in the Windsor Boundaries. I live at 1230 North Farm Lane Circle. I have three kids at Windsor. They've been there for seven years. I've been on the PTA. I've worked as a room on. I've given so much of my time and energy to make Windsor a great school. When I first started there, it wasn't the school that people wanted to go to and it had some struggles, but we have given our blood, sweat, and tears to make that school thrive. And now the rug's been ripped out from under us by being blindsided by this decision and it's not fair and it's not okay. I appreciate you listening to our feedback so much, though, and giving us, from Plan A to Plan C was a huge leap in bound. And now giving us some more time would be an amazing thing. That's what we're pleading for tonight, is that you slow down and take all the feedback, not only from what you've had in the past six weeks, but for the next year or more, to find a better way to save our school and many others that are thriving and have, like we've said, the, the population at our school has a DLI that is unique and we have many economically disadvantaged kids that are Spanish speakers and they work so well with our English-speaking kids that are learning Spanish. We love the ethnic diversity there and it's created such a wonderful community. And Plan C is great in some ways, but it has so much lacking. It's going to rip that community apart. It's going to separate those kids from each other that have come to grow together and learned and formed relationships that you can't form in any other way than what is at Windsor, having, having those different backgrounds together. Plan C also has a lot of issues with safety and you've heard that in the feedback. We have the ideal location for drop-off and pickup for people walking. It's safer. For people driving out of area, it's safer. And you putting those people that are across from 1600 North have to drive their kids because it's not safe to cross 1600 North into Northridge, you're going to have traffic from those parents coming from south of 1600 North. That's causing more traffic and people from out of bounds causing more traffic. So sending us to Northridge does not solve any of that. And there's also traffic issues that will happen at Orchard Elementary, as you've seen in some slideshows that have been presented. They've changed the boundaries years ago, you guys did, so that the junior high students wouldn't cross 1600 North. And now you're going to have like kindergartners crossing. It doesn't really make sense. It's not safe. And not only that, but as I've said, we have amazing programs at our school that will be disintegrated if you choose to, to go away with Windsor. We have Boys and Girls Club. We have reading programs that help the disadvantaged kids and, and everyone there. It is thriving. And we also have a wonderful musical theater program that, I, I've done musical theater my whole life. Nowhere else can you find that, especially for disadvantaged kids. They're not going to have that opportunity if Windsor is torn down. And there's no way that you can rebuild these programs in time to help the kids who have been devastated by COVID and then they're having these things ripped away from them. It's not a good time for this and it's too rushed to make these programs function in a way that will help those kids. So please reconsider. Give us the time. Please vote for Plan D and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Sarah.
Hi, my name's Hazel Huli and I live on 378 West 700 North Linden. I came here to say not to close Linden Elementary because I love my teacher and my friends. I have an older sister and a younger sister as well in sixth grade, so this is her last year and the other one is in kindergarten, kindergarten. And I have three other siblings that are going to go there. But in my opinion, it is that Linden is the best school you could go to. When I heard about Option D, but it would be better to keep the current boundary, I was okay about it. Please don't close Linden Elementary and if you do, please keep me with my friends and my teacher. Thank you for taking my time to hear my opinion about this.
Thank you, Hazel.
My name's Joe Johnson and I'm from Lehigh. This process has been rushed. Data which may have been three to five years old was used to study the closures, at least in Lehigh. Families deserve a boundary study that's based on recent and actual data. Data projections compiled in 2019 and 2020 are not acceptable. It appears the is simply dusted off a prior study. ASD has alluded to the primary reasons for disclosures as bond failure, lagging enrollments, and seismic issues. Yet, these were not new issues. But media reported days earlier than, than from the announcement that Alpine School District unequivocally says those schools will not close. It feels like you're playing politics with our children. Your words have meaning. Don't leave us wondering what the definition of is is. Code passed in 2022 regarding springboard schools reads, "A school board of a springboard school shall establish a school improvement committee composed of a local school board member, the school principal, three parents, two teachers, and one district administrator." Hopefully, the legislators, the legislature is taking note of how a school closure committee should appear. Not a group of administrators with no ties to a community and a clear lack of understanding of the issues at hand. It appears glaringly obvious that the committee never even walked the path that you're expecting these kids to walk when you make these boundary changes. Main Street in Lehigh with the roundabout is a great example. I've heard people talk about 1600 North in Linden. Every school community deserves to be studied on its own merits and not just lumped together so that all parents are mad at the same time. Your guys' comments, not mine. Tonight, I implore you to do the right thing and step back and look at these school closures. Do the process right. Follow state law. Look at better options. Other options are available that you're not considering. For example, Lehigh Elementary is on the closure list, but why not develop a five-year plan to rebuild the school? Why not create the opportunity to fill that school with other programs with students from neighboring schools? You could put in DLI. You could go put in ALL. And you can give parents five years to make plans for these things. That's proper planning. Give these other schools some relief, but to be sure, the solution to overcrowding in West Lehigh is not closing schools. ASD has not provided an adequate reason to stakeholders as to why these schools are closing. You have been presented with language for emotion that will avoid legal actions by parents. Please do the right thing. If not, I, as well as many others, will sign on to legal actions to fight these closures. Put this in perspective. Parents from all over the district are willing to say, we're willing to stand up and sue the district. Nobody wants to do that. Nobody wants to sue their kids' schools. It's not right that parents have been put in this situation. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dareth Golding and I live on 133 South, 350 East in Linden. And both my kids go to Rocky Mountain Elementary and they're in the Portuguese program. And the main purpose I put them in the program was to have the opportunity for them to learn another language, to learn those skills and have the opportunity to be challenged, not only academically, but socially and maturity. And my two boys have really seen improvements in how they handle tough challenges and being challenged every day, being uncomfortable in school and being able to speak in front of other people in a different language. And they've had those struggles, but they've come through them and it's really neat to see how they've improved. But the other point is that I put them in Rocky Mountain so they would be with their friends that are not in the Portuguese program, that they would be in the neighborhood school, that they would be with those friends that have chosen not to do dual immersion. And that they have those friendships and moving them out would move them out of their community and their friendships that they currently have. And that would be a disservice to them and the purpose of what we wanted as a community and have those opportunities. So I would like if you could take more time and give us the opportunity to reassess maybe these options and what is available to us as a district. And so, thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Justin Thomas and just wanted to echo some of the, the thoughts and voice my opinion on keeping the DLI program for Portuguese at Rocky Mountain. My family and I have been living in Brazil and just moved back to the United States last summer. And this school year is actually the first school year my kids have attended for their formal education in the United States. They're, they're all fluent in Portuguese and English, but it's really important for us that they continue to develop their Portuguese, learn grammar in a formal classroom. And also, as far as putting them in a school that would maybe be segregated with other dual-language students, personally, I wouldn't like that because I want them, they're, they're dual citizens and I want them to be surrounded by American kids that only speak English because my kids speak English, but they're not used to American culture. So I, I love that. We actually, in moving back to the US, before we came here in 2021, we, we called ahead of time and, and we looked at different areas and we took a tour of Rocky Mountain. And so we specifically selected where we were going to move in the state of Utah. We, we went up to Tooele, everywhere that had Portuguese immersion in the state. And we selected this area specifically because of Rocky Mountain and the infrastructure that's there. And if it moves to another location, it's not going to have that, that strong background that it has right now. So just wanted to, to voice that opinion and hopefully we can keep Rocky Mountain with the Portuguese program. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you for this opportunity to make our statements and for your consideration of the feedback that we've already given. My name is Antonia and I have three children who attend schools in this district. And we have been in the Portuguese program for, since 2013 when my oldest started at Rocky Mountain. It was in its second year when we started and it has grown so much and developed and we've seen really hard things and we've seen really good things come out of it. And I feel like disrupting it now would make us just go through those pitfalls again where we've really established ourselves here. The program and community at Rocky Mountain has been important and impactful in our lives. I could talk for hours about all the wonderful things we love about Rocky Mountain, just like these other parents love their schools, we love ours. I would like to just focus tonight on why you should pause the proposed boundary changes, school closures, and the movement of our DLI programs. You have an obligation to preserve and protect all programs in the district. Placing and keeping DLI programs in schools throughout the district allows students from many cities to participate in the programs offered at schools conveniently located in proximity to where they live. Students who participate in a dual-language immersion program experience benefits such as improved language proficiency, including in their native language, increased cultural awareness, improved academic performance, and better job prospects. Placing these programs in permanent locations where families and teachers know they will stay long-term allows them to thrive. It brings families to these communities and allows the entire community to benefit from the enhanced cultural environment that naturally evolves in these communities. DLI programs are an important offering in our district and therefore should be protected and preserved through thoughtful and meaningful planning regarding placement, hiring, and allocated resources. I am not asking that you take away from other deserving students who are under your care, but I respectfully request that you offer our DLI programs and our communities the consideration, thoughtfulness, and protection all students deserve. Programs which are purposely placed, which are supported by members of the community and are watched over by the board and the district leadership, will benefit all who participate in them or associate with them in any way. Postponing the boundary changes and school closures and subsequent disruption of the DLI programs, while further study is done, will allow you to gather more data, do additional research, and make a thoughtful and purposeful decision about how and where to place these students, their teachers, and other staff and administration. I recognize that buildings age, that enrollments fluctuate, and communities have new and evolving needs. But I urge you to pause on the current proposed changes to ensure the data is accurate. Pause to give families, faculty, and staff time to prepare for a smooth transition to new roles, new locations, and new boundaries. Pause to review how, how funds can be and should be allocated to meet the needs of students in our area before rushing forward with a plan that hasn't been truly vetted. Pause to consider the real impact on these communities. You owe it to those who will be affected by these changes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amanda McAllister. I live at 1324 North Tredeman Lane. You probably recognized me from the last meeting. It's good to be back. I spoke about our potential boundary changes, but according to tonight's agenda, from what we are hearing from multiple teachers, principals, and various others within the district, we will more than likely be granted one more year in our school. I really hope this is true. We're grateful for that consideration. We are grateful to see you all listening to us as parents and frankly, the people who voted you in the seats that you are sitting. With that being said, I ask you to do your due diligence this upcoming year. I ask that you truly study our area and see what we are seeing as community members. Lehigh is growing rapidly everywhere. Lehigh, losing Lehigh Elementary will be detrimental to our city. I would love to see a new assessment done of our seismic concerns since nothing formal has been done since 2006. We are already in need of a new school in West Lehigh, not less. Our surrounding schools are full and adding students to them is not going to help the overcrowding situation. I propose that we use Lehigh Elementary as a relief to these already full schools. Relieve the numbers of these surrounding schools while upping Lehigh's enrollment. Let's give our school the necessary updates for seismic issues. Let's use this school and its incredible staff that Lehigh cannot afford to lose. When I attended the open house held at Lehigh High School, I was astounded as to what I was hearing. Our numbers and statistics changed to fit the current conversation. For example, when we were talking about closing our school, our enrollment numbers were surely declining. But when speaking about Option C for our potential boundaries, keeping all of our students together and sending everyone to Meadow, suddenly Meadow's enrollments were increasing and so were Lehigh's. So do you see how, sorry, but according to the data, they are both declining that you've released, so do you see how the numbers are changing with each argument? This makes the district's presented data seem unreliable and untrustworthy. I ask again for you to do your due diligence, to really study and present to us a more accurate numbers and then stick to them. Don't tailor the numbers to fit your agenda. There are already many ramifications that we are already seeing and feeling because of the rash decisions you have made to close our school. We are being tossed around and we can't even make end of the school year plans because nobody knows what's happening. This is disruptive to our children, teachers, and our community. I can't speak for all parents, but for me, your abrupt announcement to close our school was emotional and disheartening. You have been elected to do your best and to consider all options for our children who are the hope and the future of our community. I ask of you all again, come up with a better plan. Do not close Lehigh Elementary now or in the foreseeable future. Thank you.
I had to look at the name multiple times because I wasn't sure it was me. My last name is spelled wrong. It's Gomes, G-O-M-E-S. I'm here as a parent for Rocky Mountain Elementary. We have been with the program for nine years. For the first five years, we drove back and forth until we were able to afford a home in North Orem so our kids can continue the program. I have to be honest that we didn't get a home in Linden because we couldn't afford for a home, but in North Orem was close enough for our kids to, can drop them off and they can walk home. Sorry, this is kind of very emotional. But I, when I woke up that morning and I saw the news and I almost cried. And I didn't know what to tell my kids because all, our whole life and their extracurricular activities, friends, everything has been built, you know, surround the program. They have friends that are in the program, their friends are not. And I love to have them over to braid their hair, to cook, for them to get to know each other and learn about each other's culture. I work two jobs. I can drop my kids off, they can walk home. And I know it's a safe community for them. And we have many parents, Rocky Mountain Elementary, remember when we started nine years ago, it was not the same as what it is today. I felt like we are more connected, we have more support, we know each other and we love each other, we want to be with each other. And our kids feel the same way. Since the day of the news, my fifth grade daughter comes, she's like, Mom, have you done anything? I said, I'm trying. I'm emailing, I'm going to meetings, I'm trying to do everything. because they have put a lot of effort into this, just like the district did to start the program. I remember when we went to the meeting, they told us that we have to commit for six years because the district has brought teachers from Brazil, from other places to teach the program, and we have to commit to be here. And I felt like we have done our part as a parent, and we need the district to be with us. Thank you so much for your time. I know you have worked hard to be here and long hours, we appreciate it, but we hope that you guys can give us the time that we need and listen to our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Isabel. Robin.
Hi, I'm Robin Blackburn. I live at 674 North 500 East here in American Fork. And as a Portuguese speaker, I'm so excited, so many people are excited about Portuguese. But I'm here to talk about something else. So with the boundary changes, it seems like Forbes will likely become a Title I school and Greenwood will maybe lose its Title I status. I'm excited at the prospect that my son's speech and language pathologist, his teacher, will not have to pay for her own paper in her classroom. However, lots of national research, as well as kind of just in talking to local teachers here, has shown that Title I schools come with unique challenges. It comes with high rates of trauma among students, mental, emotional, behavioral outcomes that are worse, perhaps poor nutrition at home, inadequate sleep. There's also lower developmental scores within Title I schools, more behavioral problems, a stigma which can hurt future achievements, and a high-stress environment that can lead to high teacher turnover. I think it's important for the school district to address the challenges that Forbes and Greenwood may face if they change Title I status. It's important to let the community, parents like myself, and teachers know the plan for addressing these challenges that may be upcoming with the boundary changes. I would like to know what changes we can expect to see at Forbes and Greenwood in the upcoming year, including how those potential new resources or the lack of those resources will affect those schools and the students. Thanks.
Isabel.
Hi, my name is Jessica Yehat and I live in Linden. I'm actually a person who believes that people generally act in good faith, so when I first heard about the changes, I was like, "I'm sure they've done their research and they know exactly what they're doing, so I'm not going to really get involved." But then, when I have started hearing reports from meetings and attending meetings where things are said, like, "Our priority is to keep Linden Elementary 100% intact." To me, that said, "Well, why is Linden getting the priority versus the other schools? Like, what was it that made that school get the priority?" I started to feel like I had to maybe get a little bit more involved. So I'm a mother of five children in the Portuguese immersion program. I live in Rocky Mountain School Boundaries. My daughter joined it the very first year the program was created. She's currently in 11th grade at Pleasant Grove High School. She loves the program. She actually told me, "Mom, I don't care where they move it, you have to drive the boys to it." Because I have two boys still in elementary school that are in the program, so all five of my kids are now in it all the way down through third grade. My daughter has passed the Noel test and has gotten college credit for this, and she loves it and they love it. One of the unique things about it is the friendships that they form. Usually, when you move on through elementary school to junior high and high school, you stop being able to have classes with your friends. But through this program, they consistently have classes with these friends. So my daughter's friends that she made in first grade, nine of them still hang out on a regular basis, weekly. They are best friends. They go to dances together, I mean, they do everything together, and they've been able to keep those consistent friendships. And the quality of kids are amazing in these programs. They want to excel. They look for ways to, like, they want to learn. That's why they're doing it. They are looking for opportunities to better their education, and they work really hard doing it. And so I just wanted to come and tell you that keeping it at Rocky Mountain is super important to me. Currently, like I said, I have a daughter at Pleasant Grove, a son going to Tempanogus High School, a daughter at Oak Canyon, and I have two at Rocky Mountain. Moving it to Manila would be just about impossible for me, even as a stay-at-home mom, to accommodate that schedule. And personally, in my neighborhood, living in Rocky Mountain Boundaries, in the past years, I've had five or six families move in specifically for the program. So they've located houses, purchased them in Boundaries for their kids, so their kids can walk home, just so they can have that. And so now, moving it, the market is just not that great, you know, to change houses just because that's where your school is going. And so I'm here tonight because my two boys, who are in the program, have a soccer game right now, but they told me they'd rather I come here and let you know how much they really hope that you will keep their program with their friends at Rocky Mountain. Thank you.
Jessica. Carolyn.
Thank you, Board. I stand here, Carolyn Lundberg, Mayor of Linden City, and I'd also like to introduce Julie Fulmer, Mayor of Vineyard City, and her council member, Marty Sinfuentes. All right, so I would like to read a letter to you that was sent just prior to this meeting. As Mayor of Linden City, I want to express my deep concern regarding the recent proposal to close five elementary schools so rapidly. I strongly oppose this proposal, and I, along with some other mayors, would urge you to reconsider taking more time to make such significant decisions that will have unintended consequences. We have received overwhelming feedback from our citizens that the closure of these schools will have a detrimental impact on the children and families of our communities, far beyond their school gates. And we understand that these schools are not merely buildings, but institutions that bring people together and form the social fabric of our neighborhoods. We implore you to consider the positive impact that these schools have on our communities. For instance, Linden Elementary has an A overall grade status, providing a long history of quality education and fostering a sense of belonging among its students, teachers, and families with a rich variety of programs. Sharon Elementary serves one of Orem's most economically disadvantaged neighborhoods and provides much-needed one-on-one instruction for students. As a Title I school, it has specialized programs and federal funding that serves students and families who are most in need of assistance. Windsor Elementary is a top-performing school with strong parental engagement and support, and its closure would be felt deeply by its students and families. Not only are we concerned about the impact to the schools that would be closed, but also the cascading effect to surrounding schools, such as increases in class sizes, disruption of successful specialized programs, who have come out tonight in force, transportation needs of families, and so on. We would like to collaborate with you, I and other mayors in this county, to pause this process and explore alternative, creative, and innovative solutions that could keep these schools open. We recognize that decisions like these have a multi-generational impact and find it imperative that we take our time and approach this decision with careful consideration, especially when the potential for future regret exists. We believe that a team of parents, students, teachers, staff, and elected officials dedicated to preserving these wonderful schools could find a way forward.
And I just want to second this. I also sent a letter very much like this one, and I'll continue where Carolyn left off. But I wanted to add that every now and then, we take a step to serve in a way that a servant of the people seem to meet the needs of the community. And the discussion tonight seems to come from a deep compassion and support that exists in these school communities that is difficult to forge. As people who have sat on that side of the bench, I like to consider what a moment like this one presents us tonight and how it offers me to serve even better, to learn more, to articulate, and to share information more clearly. We heard that you're considering pausing the proposal to close the five schools spoken about today, and we are so grateful for your attention to this matter, as we feel additional study and process will create stronger and better pathways for these students and families. There are multiple ways to approach this, and we want to empower you to find alternatives. We're committed to working with you transparently, with you to find a solution to keep our schools open, and we stand ready to assist in making this happen and invite you to work with us to find a solution in the best interest of our students, their families, our city, and our surrounding cities. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter and the desire to do what's most important for the children under your stewardship.
Thank you, mayors. Thank you. Alicia.
Good evening. I'm glad to be here today. My name is Alicia Alba, and I am very thankful for the attention that you've given so far to everyone who came here tonight to speak. I hope that you take our messages to heart and that you will act accordingly. Tonight, I am simultaneously weighed down by great sorrow and lifted up by great hope. The past six weeks have taken a real toll, a toll on me personally, on my family, my friends, my school, my community, my city, and my entire district. Rumors and misinformation have spread like wildfire. Deep rifts have formed where connections once were strong, and pain has been and continues to be felt by families all across our district who were thrust into this chaotic and untenable situation. In my comment tonight, I want to briefly outline the legal failures of Alpine School District so that the public is aware of what has occurred and why it is a problem. First, the December 2022 notifications were insufficient to fill state statute and to begin the legally required 120-day public input process for two reasons. First, they did not notify of possible closures in 2023. And second, they did not identify specific school communities. Without notifying school communities that they would be affected or how, there was nothing for people to give input on. There was no "there, there." Further evidencing this reality is the glaring absence of mechanisms provided by Alpine School District before March 1st. There was no boundary study website, no feedback button, no open houses, no opportunities for public comment, et cetera. Your own words on February 14th indicate repeatedly that the public input process had not yet started in your minds. The head of your legal department also indicated to a parent in late March that March 1st was the date the public input started. He only changed his mind on that date after speaking with the communications team. Second, in spite of clear legal and expert advice to the contrary, the board actually voted to close the five elementary schools during the February 28th board meeting. This was the final vote of approval. I understand that there was some qualifying language in that motion about in accordance with state law, but that is an oxymoronic impossibility. The board could not vote on Day 78 to close schools in accordance with state statute because state statute requires a minimum of 120 days before that vote can take place. All public input after March 1st was tainted by the underlying message, including from school board members themselves, that the closures were a foregone conclusion that could not be influenced by public input. Additionally, after the February 28th vote, Alpine School District immediately started implementing those closures, effectively emptying the bank account of these schools' human capital. Administrators were told their schools would be closed and they would be reassigned. Teachers were encouraged to seek employment elsewhere. School community councils and PTAs were told not to hold elections or vote on trust land funds. In other words, the process of closing schools began. On March 28th, board members indicated that even though they acknowledged they may have made a mistake, it would be too late to reverse course because they have already started closing the schools, even though the 120 days of your own timeline still had not passed. What is the point of a 120-day public input process if the input cannot have an impact? This is just further evidence of how botched this process has been. This is an utter mess, and it needs to be fixed. It is not too late. I really do feel a lot of compassion for where you find yourselves. It is a difficult conundrum that you've created. The only way forward, as I see it, would be for you to reverse everything back to as it was on February 27th. Refer it back to where we were before this misstep was made and focus your energy now on doing what you need to in order to replenish these bank accounts of these schools so that they are set up to succeed. And so I just want to leave you with this final plea one more time. Please stop. Please reverse this process. Please follow the law. Please make this right. I really, truly hope that you will, for all of our sakes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alicia. Jenny.
I appreciate the opportunity to address you. I do, however, wish more consideration was taken before the announcement of an imminent closure was made to our students. There was a lot of despair, a lot of tears, and a lot of frustration. I believe the job of our school board is to watch out and make decisions for our teachers, students, and parents. The lack of appropriate communication in this matter is the direct opposite of that responsibility. Clear and in-depth information should have been distributed prior to the board vote. If the district was in a situation that forces school closures, the public should have been informed of that information, and if that information had been shared openly, I believe the vote for the bond would have changed substantially and dramatically. I feel the board has misused their power at the expense of the emotions of the people that they have been voted to serve and advocate for. Shutting down Lehigh Elementary not only impacts the emotional and academics of these students, it also carelessly regards the teachers that we love and that are in the trenches sacrificing so much for our unique community. Lehigh Elementary is a historical legacy of the Alpine School District and a very important part of Lehigh City. Taking this school out of the center of Lehigh takes away the heartbeat of our city. The youth of this area will suffer as they are bussed or have to walk in dangerous conditions outside the downtown area. Teachers will bear the burden of moving schools and possibly grade levels. It breaks up the community that we hold so dear at Lehigh Elementary. Shutting this school would be a disregard to a school that is serving their area and students in ways that will not be met by other schools if that closure happens.
Thank you, Jen.
My name is Susan Fisher. I am a resident of Linden, Utah, and a mother of five children, who have all attended Linden Elementary. Not only is Linden Elementary my kid's alma mater, but also an integral part of my neighborhood and community. Despite having no elementary-aged children, I chose to come here tonight to speak in favor of keeping Linden Elementary open. I understand your proposals to close Linden and integrate the current and future students into Rocky Mountain and Central Elementary Schools. Prior to a final decision, I wish to present reasons to seriously reconsider this plan, a plan I believe will have seriously negative consequences on the academic achievement of our Linden students and our community. Linden is one of the larger elementary schools in our area with around 650 students. The average class size is 24 compared to Rocky Mountain at 27 and Central at 25. Linden's RISE test score averages from 3rd to 6th grades are 10 to 20 points higher than Rocky Mountain, 30 to 40 points higher than Central across all subjects tested, Language Arts, Math, and Science. Linden's average standard scores are nearly 24 points higher in student achievement than Rocky Mountain and 49 points higher than Central. It is no surprise Linden Elementary ranks 58th in the state, while Rocky Mountain's at 213 and Central at 356. Clearly, Linden Elementary is the highest academic-performing school in this sector, all while operating on a tighter per-student budget than Rocky Mountain and Central. It makes no sense to close such a high-performing school. I believe Linden Elementary's performance is due in no small part to the amazing community of students, parents, teachers, and administrators, as well as the community that supports it. Currently, Linden has a 100% student participation rate. It also has a very high teacher retention rate of 82%. This says a lot about the positive community which has been created at Linden Elementary since its establishment in 1900. Parents like myself, who no longer have elementary-aged children, as well as former students, still volunteer and participate in this school. Schools like Linden Elementary are more than brick and mortar. They are a center and an adhesive for our whole community. Yes, it has gone through many renovations and rebuilds, and I understand infrastructure has to be updated, but the true cost of removing a school from a community and spending millions of dollars to build a new school further away must be seriously considered. It seems self-evident that combining three schools at capacity into two can only harm the education of all students. I contend that the benefit of updating Linden Elementary and continuing its success far outweighs the cost. We have a great synergistic formula at work here at Linden Elementary, a formula I sincerely doubt can ever be duplicated elsewhere. If you care as deeply about student success as we do in the community of Linden, you will listen to its community. Thank you.
Susan. Thank you. 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 a formula I sincerely doubt can ever be duplicated elsewhere. If you care as deeply about student success as we do in the community of Linden, you will listen to its community. Thank you.
Susan.
Hello. My name is Dani Rowan, and I live at 462 East, 420 South in Pleasant Grove. And first, I would like to express my appreciation for the many ways the board has engaged with me and other parents recently. Thank you for listening, and thank you for the difficult work you do for our children. I'd like to echo everything that's been said tonight, especially about my school Windsor, and add my voice to their comments. I have three children at Windsor Elementary in the DLI program. I'm grateful for Plan D from a Windsor perspective at least, and I hope you will vote to keep Windsor open, not just for one year, but for many years to come. Spanish has been at Windsor for a very long time. I personally attended Windsor as a kid, and Spanish has been an integral part of my life. Because my parents took advantage of a Spanish program at their neighborhood school just today, I was able to help a Spanish-speaking gentleman I ran into in a parking lot who was looking for directions to the hospital. Afterwards, my second grader said to me, "Mom, I love it when that happens," and it happens a lot. This is the value of DLI. When we provide nurture and support programs like DLI, we are offering something priceless to our children and our community, especially as the demographics of our state continue to become more diverse. But DLI cannot survive if it is treated as a luxury item and tossed around to different schools like a hot potato. DLI is the kind of program that many families plan their lives around. They choose where to live based on where these programs are offered. Because it requires a long-term investment from families, in fact, families are asked to commit to staying in the program for the full six years, DLI programs are not portable. It's true that DLI programs are not equitably distributed throughout the district due to many factors. I fully support making DLI accessible to more families in Alpine School District, but not at the expense of taking them from schools where they are thriving and families have already committed to them. The district has been very focused on equity. Of course, equity is a noble goal, but I feel the fear that the district is actually moving towards blind equality by trying to equalize numbers, facilities, and programs without regard to the context of individual schools and their communities. True equity must account for individual needs and circumstances. It should closely consider context such as history, community, and demographics. It requires an intimate and sensitive understanding of individual schools and neighborhoods. Unfortunately, I have come to believe in the past seven weeks that due to the distance between the decision-makers and the schools, that a truly equitable approach is not happening. When programs are moved and schools are closed in the name of equity and especially on the unjustifiable timeline created by the board, it breeds resentment and distrust. These feelings are toxic to our public institutions. Trust in Alpine School District was already dangerously low before February 28th, and since then, I fear the bottom has fallen out. I have been a staunch defender of the district in the past, and I sincerely believe that you have the best interest of our students in mind. However, the past seven weeks have given me serious doubts about the implementation of these values, and when the public doesn't trust their elected officials and the professionals that serve with them, the very institution tasked with educating our most precious resource, our children, cannot survive. Due to feelings of uncertainty, frustration, and resentment, even more families who were previously committed to their neighborhood public schools are ready to jump ship to charter schools, private schools, and homeschool. As parents pull their kids out of public school, enrollments continue to decline, and more school closures become inevitable, and we find ourselves in a downward spiral. A board member told me that in order to keep kids from moving to charter or private schools, the district has to provide a competitive product. Maybe the district is too big to be able to provide a competitive public school product because district leadership and decision-makers are too far removed from the communities where the schools are. You have an opportunity tonight to rebuild the trust that has been lost in the district by voting to terminate the hasty process you began on February 28th. You can commit to getting input from principals, PTAs, and community members before you move forward with closures and boundary changes in the future. You can apologize for the chaos this has created for our schools, our communities, and the teachers who work for you. They are the lifeblood of our schools, and they are, in the words of a teacher at my school, shaken. This is so much bigger than just five schools and just next year. This is about trust, clear communication, and collaboration so that the public schools in our districts and communities can continue to thrive for generations to come. Thank you.
Emily.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Emily Mitchell. My family lives at 522 South, 500 East in Orem. We currently have two daughters who are students at Rocky Mountain's Portuguese Dual Language Immersion Program, and thus, I'm here to advocate for keeping that program at Rocky Mountain. My oldest is in fifth grade this year, and I have a daughter in third grade, and my kindergartner has been accepted into the program and will start next year. We live two blocks from Centennial Elementary. It would have been a lot easier for my children to simply walk to school, to the closer school, rather than driving a total of 60 minutes a day to take and pick up at Rocky Mountain. However, the benefits for my children has made all the driving worth it. First of all, I myself am from California. I am half-Mexican, and I grew up in a very culturally diverse population. I've never felt like a minority until moving to Utah 12 years ago. I did not learn Spanish growing up, but I was able to serve a mission for my church in Brazil, so when I learned that there was a Portuguese language immersion school closely to my house, I was all in, as it is very important for me that my children learn cultural diversity, especially living here in Utah. My children have been able to learn a new language with all the benefits that that has for their developing brains, in a language that I am able to communicate with them. But more than that, they've been able to associate and be educated in an environment that is more culturally diverse than most of Utah, and to learn about a culture and a country that is dear to me. I believe that they are learning tolerance and appreciation for differences in appearances, opinions, and beliefs. And if every child was given the opportunity to put into practice daily this essential quality of appreciating each other's differences, what a different and better world we would live in. My children have a sense of accomplishment when we meet other Portuguese speakers in the community, and they are able to talk to them. Actually happened this afternoon at the grocery store. And I think that this kind of confidence boosts their self-confidence and will contribute to better mental health as they grow up. Although I firmly believe in all the benefits of this program, if the program was moved further north, it would be unrealistic for our family to continue attending as we are currently stretched from limits financially as far as we can drive, and it's not financially viable for us to move and chase the program. So I sincerely hope that the district will keep the Portuguese Dual Language Immersion Program at Rocky Mountain. Thank you.
Daniel.
I feel like nobody likes this idea. I live in an area, it's Willow Park over in Lehigh. We've been through three of these changes in the last 10 years where we've been proposed to have to go to different schools. Two of those changes succeeded. We live in a small little area called Little Alaska that kind of is an outlier, and unfortunately, I feel like we get pushed to the side more than not. I have watched this happen multiple times where friends get ripped apart, and when you're in an elementary, it affects them in a way that we haven't even really understood yet, especially when you get into children with autism and autistic, and then we start also talking about the future. What about when those are the oldest children? And now we have to tell their siblings that aren't even going to those schools, "Hey, it's time for you to go to a different school now," when they want to continue in their footsteps of their family members. And I think that another thing that we're really overlooking, I'm from a very small town, okay? We don't give up on the stuff that's old. Actually, that's what's created the town. That is the history and the legacy of the town, okay? The community is built on the schools, not the schools built on the community, okay? Our future comes from those schools, and it was an honor for me to walk through the schools and the halls of my mom and my dad and to be able to say, "Hey, kids, let's go and walk through the schools of your grandparents. Don't let money blind us. I think that we can find different ways." But in my community, in a small town, and I know some of you up there could probably feel this way too, history is what builds us, okay? Why take something away from what they look forward to? I still look forward to going back to my old hometown, and guess what? We didn't rip it down. We didn't go to another location. We built upon it, okay? And that's awesome. And I'd rather be able to say, "Hey, you know what? This is what we do, kids. We support the community. We build, we fix, we repair, and we do it together. We don't just force you to do something like your cattle and go somewhere else without a say and let somebody else make that decision for you," and we have. We don't know the effects that COVID's really come up upon all of us, okay? It's just barely. When I talk to the teachers, they're starting to see it in certain classes, how different it is, let alone to throw this on top of them, let alone, "This is, like I said, the third time I've done this," and no time gets better. It doesn't. I hope that we can find a different way to do it, but I don't think shun downs a school is. That's what's built our communities. It's what's going to continue to build our future. I think rebuilding them, finding a way to upgrade them and be able to walk our kids down the halls that we went through, that you guys went through, and show that we are a strong community by rebuilding and reinforcing instead of just giving up on something, which I've seen, and it never ends well, just to go somewhere else and shove it into other things. Our kids don't have a say in this, and obviously, that's why we're all here, and some of these brave kids that have come up. This isn't the right answer. It's not, you know, and I hope that we can all come to an agreement and a resolution on this. And I guess there we go, guys. Good luck to you. I wouldn't want to be in your shoes. I wouldn't, but I hope the best.
Hi, I'm Chris Little. I am the Region 9 PTA Director, which means I'm the PTA President over Alpine School District. I just want to read our PTA mission statement. It is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. And I just want to thank all these parents. Sorry. I love the children here in Alpine, and I appreciate the parents advocating for their students because that's what PTA does, and this is what we encourage you to do is to advocate for your students, and I really, truly appreciate about that. And I kind of stand in a unique position that I rub shoulders with these people up here, and I know their hearts because I've sat with them in meetings, and I know that they love your children. And I sat with Stacy today, and I've sat with her many times in other meetings and organizations, and I know her heart, and I know she'll fight for every child, and I know she has. And I know, and I've sat in meetings with Dr. Farnsworth, and I know he loves your children, and I know he probably stays up at night thinking about this, and I know all of these people stay up at night thinking about this because I know that they love your children. And I know that your communities love your children. This is why we're here. This is why we're in this room, to advocate and make the best decisions for our kids, but I just want you to realize that they also love your children, and they are staying up at night too, and taking a lot of heat for their decisions they're making. I know it's not easy. We did elect them. We need to remember that, and if you're not happy with them, reelect somebody else. But while they're here, we need to remember that. And just remember to continue to advocate for your children, but be kind, and we'll continue to advocate for our children in the way that you and us know how, and thank you.
Now, that is the end of the people who have signed up to speak, but this is a public hearing, and if there is someone else who did not sign up who would like to speak at this time, please come forward. You will need to give us your name, your address, and so on, so we can put you on the list. Yeah, wait, wait, wait. Come to the microphone first so we can get it. Thank you.
Sure.
How many of you would like to still speak? Maybe if you'd like to speak, you could come sit in the front row.
Are you ready for my name and address? Sure, I will. I just didn't want to block anybody. I'm kind of wide.
Karen, do we have another sign-up sheet so that we could circulate it with these people?
Are you ready for me? My name is Benjamin Wheeler. I live at 478 East, 450 South in Orem. I have a son who is attending Tempanogus High School, and hopefully, we will graduate in about six weeks. So my odyssey started a couple of years ago when a quarterback at Mountain View High School was called into a principal's office and asked and told that you do not have the opportunity to compete for a position as starting quarterback on the team. Five athletes moved from Mountain View High School to Tempanogus High School. Similar things happened to us at Orem High School, and my son also moved from Orem High School to Tempanogus High School. The oversight in the sports programs is where I started my odyssey two years ago. I'm grateful for the 150-some-odd people that are here in this building today. Back then, it was 10 of us. Now it's 200 of us and many more. My statement is, "Rush to close, slow down. What an interesting concept. Stronger Together, a political issue committee who has at least two members sitting on your seated panel in front of us today, ran against Proposition 2 on this exact mantra, 'Slow down. It's too fast.'" As you intimately know, Stronger Together actively obscured that there were four feasibility studies prior to the 2022 study going back as far as 2003 that found that all four studies found that it was feasible in all cases for Alpine School District to be split. But somehow, Orem was moving too fast. Now we know the real speed racer who is moving too fast is Alpine School District. The message is clear. Timing and not the law is on the side of Alpine School District and not on the school buildings and the programs that will disappear from the face of the earth based upon your decisions. Now, less than 120 days after that election, where we said no more bonds until there's a change, you've issued additional bonds that are of a different ilk. It appears that Alpine School District is in fast lane to close these schools and change the face of the schools of Orem, Linden, and Lehigh forever. As stated, there is a 120-day warning of boundary realignment. May I remind you, at a bond information meeting at Orem High School on October 17th, representatives of Alpine School District announced that five schools would be closed. When this was reported to the media two days later, the offending slides in that presentation disappeared at a similar meeting at Tempanogus High School, and the statement became, "These schools are being watched." I don't think they're being watched anymore. As disingenuous as Alpine School District was during the 2022 election, we have come to know who you are and what you do and don't represent. All these new parents that are in this building today that are upset will quickly find that Alpine School District will do what is required to further their agenda, to build great and spacious buildings like Centennial Elementary that honestly look like a prison and nothing like a neighborhood school. I remember Aaron Davidson knocking on a school door to a closed Alpine School District even though COVID protocol calls had been relaxed. He was arrested and charged for disturbing the peace and pushed forward until Aaron was found guilty in court. Interesting that same Aaron Davidson is now the new Utah County Kirk and is standing in this room today. We defeated Proposition 1, the bond. I have no love for Alpine School District and less trust for anything that you do. We need our schools, and especially these programs. We also need integrity in sports programs and oversight and fairness and leadership in academic programs. What I know is that two years ago, when I saw things that were wrong, I hoped to make a difference like these new people in this building did. Asking for integrity for what I know was to save Orem schools and the Proposition 2 team that we actively were able to defeat the bond, I will continue to do this work until every bond that Alpine School District puts forward will be defeated. If you close these schools and export our dollars from our neighborhood schools, you are now collecting people who will ultimately learn what I have, which is never to trust Alpine School District. When you move ninth graders to the high schools, when you close Orem Junior High School and sell it to house developers before Orem can protect these schools by rezoning them, when you close Lakewood and sell it to UVU, I really hope that the surprised people in this room won't be surprised. As you gut Linden, Orem, and Lehigh and fund new schools in Vineyard and fund new schools in Eagle Mountain and Saratoga Springs, I am personally committed to the mantra, "If there is no split, there will be no bonds, and there will be no peace."
Now, at this point, who is first on that list? Okay, come on up and give us your name.
Hi, my name is Melina Chaffin, and do I have to say my address? Is that...
It is on the paper.
Oh, it's on the paper. Cool. Yeah, so I hail from Cedar Hills via Nuevo Casas Grandes, Chihuahua, Mexico, and I'm mainly here as a sped mom this evening, but as a former DLI immersion student from Mexico, the place I believe that inspired Utah's dual immersion program. It felt disingenuous to not stand up and speak in support of an incredible program that has had a tremendous impact on my life on the other side of the border. In an elementary school, half of my school day consisted of instruction in Spanish, and the other half of my school day instruction was given in the opposite language. As I went on to secundaria, or middle school, as it's called out here, it just depended on the teacher. I remember having an English class that was taught in Spanish. That was interesting and fun. In high school... In high school, preparatoria, as we call it down there, I had an advanced math teacher who would flip back and forth between Spanish so fast that I'm pretty sure if our brains were scanned during that lecture, those scans would look like probably the best Christmas light show you've ever seen. After graduating from high school, I went on to Utah Valley University where I majored in political science and international relations. As a student, I worked at Sharon Elementary as a teacher's aide and I can attest to the unique needs of the students and the families in that area. I was so grateful for the opportunity to work there. I got to put my dual immersion or my dual language skills to use by translating official school documents and tutoring ESL students and anyway, other things. During, I think I'm pretty sure it was my last year as a teacher's aide at Sharon Elementary, I had the unique opportunity to help a couple of students who were struggling with reading. And it was my job to help get them up to grade level. Because of being bilingual, I was able to help them. I knew, I understood the mistakes that were being made and I was able to help them with their specific challenges because of my experience. And by the end of that school year, those kids were not just at grade level, but they were reading two and three grade levels above where they were supposed to be. I wanted to just share that experience specifically because I recognize that Sharon is one of those schools that's being considered for closure. It's impossible to share in two to three minutes how dual immersion has enriched my life and how it has enriched the lives of my siblings and my family and my friends. I am so grateful for the unique opportunities that I've had because of being bilingual and bicultural. So, I would just, yeah, like to say that in my experience, dual immersion is a good seed and it's worth your every consideration. Thank you.
Josh? Now, we're putting your names up on the screen as fast as we can get them put in. If we missed somebody, let us know, please.
My name is Josh Holman. I live in Lehigh. We have our kids in the Portuguese dual language program in Rocky Mountain. So, we travel, half an hour to take them, half an hour to come back to home, half an hour to pick them up, half an hour to get home, every day. We are committed to the program. We know a lot of people who are committed to the program. And from a personal perspective, we would spend less time in the car if you moved the program. However, if you move the Rocky Mountain dual language program, it will destroy it. There are a lot of people who live in an area where they can't drive if they go north, where they've relocated to be close to it. You guys made a decision without even talking to any of the parents. Plan A, stick all the Spanish and Portuguese kids in one spot. We heard, "We thought it would be a great idea and we thought you would be excited." How would you think that that would be a good idea to move us from a place where we have built a community with the dual language program, with the all-English classes? And we know that about half of the people involved will leave either because it's too far or because they've decided, well, they're moving the program because the Alpine School District Board wants to eliminate Portuguese dual language program and is too cowardly to directly do it. Mark Twain said there's three types of lies. Lies, profanity lies, and statistics. The statistics that we have gotten from the Alpine School Board are so deceptive as to be more in the first category of lies than statistics that have been manipulated. We hear how expensive the dual language program is. At Rocky Mountain, the average class size of the dual language program is higher than that of the English-only program. The books in Portuguese that they use are provided either by the teachers with their own personal funds or by the parents, not by school district funding. There is not cost associated with it higher than that of the English program. And yet, we hear that it's so expensive to have dual language there. It is deceptive, it is lying, it is so unbelievable that it is impossible to trust that you are acting in good faith. Additionally, we hear about how many classrooms are available. That doesn't reflect the reality. There's schools where, there's 34 classes, the principal says there's 28. Where are those other six classes? Oh, well, specialties, computer labs, art. I'm a software engineer. Two years ago, I was at Silicone Slopes, a conference, and we heard an interesting thing where the average, where the median Utah salary is less than what I was making three months out of college. Stripping people of the opportunity to learn how to use a computer, to be able to do that, is stripping our kids of the future. It means that we don't care about STEM, we don't care about that stuff. Stop moving forward, follow the law, and do not destroy the dual language program.
Thank you, Josh. Katie?
My name is Katie Bolick and I live in West Lehigh. I'm actually in the Dry Creek boundaries, but I am a sped mom and so my 10-year-old attends Lehigh Elementary and is in the small group autism class. So, my concerning question for you is, with closing Lehigh Elementary, my child would be looking at her third school in three years. And so, as you're considering these boundary changes, my hope would be that you're considering a long-term strategy for the West Cohort kids in the sped program. So that there's stability for those kids, short bus rides so that they're not getting an hour bus ride out to Eagle Mountain. And so, there's a location that can meet their needs, they still have access to speech, occupational therapy, and it's a long-term strategy for stability. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Blake Lee. I'm here to address the Traverse Mountain Belmont zoning change there. I'm also here to represent my wife, who's a very passionate mother but couldn't come tonight, so she sent me and said, "I can't leave till I talk." So, I live in that green zone there that's being cut out and moved from Belmont back to Traverse Elementary. We moved up here, I took a job up here six years ago. And when we moved up here, we knew we'd have an impact on our children's education and moving them to a new region, having to find new friends and such. So, we rented to be near Traverse Mountain Elementary. And at the same time, we decided to build a home nearby there as well as we found that was a good community for our family. Once we finished building our home or got near to finish building our home, we were then told that Belmont Elementary was going to be opening and that our neighborhood was being cut out. So, at that time, we understood that the impact to our kids and all the friends they had made was going to be an impact, they would be cut off from a certain amount of their friends who would still be going to Traverse Mountain Elementary. But we moved forward with the decision, we didn't throw a fuss or anything. And now, the zone change is having us now rip them out of Belmont Elementary and all the relationships that they have there and put them back to Traverse. And so, my wife's concern there is, why is our neighborhood there, especially the Vista Ridge communities, being adversely impacted again so quickly after this? If there's a way that we could have waivers or something to allow them to continue on at Belmont Elementary, where they've built their community and where my wife, as a class mom, has helped spend financial funds and a lot of her time and investment along with other mothers in the neighborhood to make Belmont Elementary a brand-new school, to be a great school, that would probably adversely impact their desire to do such again. So, if there's something that could be done to help that green area there that's being proposed in both plans, to have an opportunity to choose between the two locations as to which the mothers or the families feel would be best for their children, that's what we would suggest and hope for. Thank you very much.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I work the graveyard shift at the hospital laboratory and I actually needed to wake up early to be here tonight. My name is Chad Hunsaker. I live at 846 East, 900 South in Pleasant Grove. This also happens to be where I lived when I attended Valley View Elementary from kindergarten through sixth grade almost 30 years ago. I'm a parent of students at Valley View Elementary School, a son in fourth grade and my identical twin boys who are in first grade. And I hold a unique position in that I was also a student there. We had the opportunity to move into my childhood home when my wife and then three children, when I accepted a teaching position with Alpine School District in 2017. And then last year purchased that home, having been reassured by the district that Valley View Elementary would not be considered for closure for at least another five years after the 2020 decision for it to remain open. Valley View parents feel like we have fought this battle before in 2020 and we are tired. I will refresh your memory of the Save Valley View campaign that we spent money, time, sweat, and tears to save Valley View three years ago. And you promised us that we would not be closed for at least five years. We made decisions about our children's education based on this promise. I still remember my first day of kindergarten nearly 30 years ago. My siblings and I would walk to school. As you may be aware, there's very little busing required at Valley View because it's a neighborhood school where it's not necessary. But I was so excited to go to school that one year before my kindergarten start, I put on a hand-me-down backpack and I tried walking with my older brothers and sisters as I had decided that I was going to start school at age four and my mom had to stop me at the door and explain that I had to wait one more year. And I was actually, and I was a student from kindergarten all the way through sixth grade. This last year, we welcomed a daughter into our family and when my wife was suffering from severe postpartum depression. My boys were able to walk the six tenths of a mile to school safely each morning through rain, shine, and snowstorm, as you might recall. When they walk home, they like to walk the very path that my brothers, sisters, and I walked 30 years ago. They walk the same route to and from school that I did in the 90s and it's been very safe. Central Elementary, which is the proposed new location, has arrival routes that are notoriously dangerous and fewer safe school routes. A child was hit in a crosswalk there in October this school year, as you might remember. Valley View has safer routes than Central and an extra year would give you, the board, the time to study and discern the best way to ensure my children's safety. I know just how difficult things are in the west of the district. I have firsthand experience as I taught science at Frontier Middle School where I did not have a science classroom and yet had nearly 47th grade students in one class. It was too hard for me, which is why I'm back to working in science instead of teaching it. So, I have a newfound respect for the teachers in the district. But creating pain in the east of the district will not heal pain in the west. We cannot heal your left hand by cutting fingers off on the right hand. I know you honorable board members are trying to do the right thing and you're in a very difficult position. Doing the right thing also requires following the letter and the spirit of the law. Your authority and power was granted to you by the people and it only extends to within the bounds of the law. That's it. The law protects the least advantaged child, the one with the least involved parents who don't even know this hearing is happening right now, or maybe they can't be here because they're heading to a second job or taking night classes of their own, like a friend of mine who was also a fellow classmate at Valley View and who lives just up the street from me, whose children now also attend Valley View Elementary. You've created confusion by accelerating your plans to close schools this summer instead of next. No one knows where they will be attending school in the fall. But if you stop and wait until the legally required time has passed, a smooth transition is possible. Again, I know you board members want to do the right thing by our children, but if you go about it in the wrong way, especially in illegal way, what lesson are you teaching my children? That the law doesn't apply to you, that you can bend the law when it suits you? My children are asking me, "Dad, why are they closing the school?" And I do not have a good, I don't know what to tell them, I don't have a good answer for them because it doesn't make sense. And I know you can show an example of doing a hard thing, representing the people who elected you and also fully comply with the law. I want my children to learn the value of following the law from your example, not the details of the legal system by forcing me to spend money that could go toward their education now and in the future to ensure that this process is carried out legally. You must show your actions that you value, by your actions that you value integrity, that you respect the rule of law, uphold its letter, and abide by its spirit. Please help my children learn that they can trust their elected representatives to honor the laws of the state when solving problems. Show them that you can be creative, not in bending the rules or the law, but in following it. Please innovate to respect the law in solving this issue. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kara Hansen. I live at 291 North, 500 East in American Fork. I am a teacher, excuse me, Belmont Elementary. So, I want to talk about the change, the boundary change between Traverse and Belmont. And my opinion is that your projections don't really make any sense personally because I feel like the district's projections that no change to the boundary will result in a net student growth of 23 at Belmont between 2023 and 2027. However, with the proposed boundary change, reducing the homes and students from Belmont and increasing those of Traverse by equal amounts, the district projects Belmont will have higher growth of 54 students. This would be impossible unless the boundary area moved to Traverse has a projected net loss of students from 2023 to 27. If there are no boundary change, the district projects Traverse would have a net loss of 30 students. The district's projected that with a proposed boundary change, Traverse will have a net loss of 59 students from 23 to 27. This means that they project the boundary change to result in a greater net loss of students to Traverse. My theory is that the boundary move has more to do with income and economic inequality than with balancing the needs and use of district assets. The district is moving more upper-income households to Traverse, which are projected to reduce the net number of students in Traverse over the next five years. If the boundary change was about utilizing and balancing the school's use of facilities, it does accomplish it, but it also creates a larger gap of income and economic inequality. Looking at the current ratio of students between the two schools, 20% of students at Belmont qualify for free or reduced lunches compared to only 9% at Traverse, meaning that Belmont has twice the ratio of lower-income students than Traverse. With the boundary change moving a large portion of economically advantaged households from Belmont, Belmont will be at an even greater disadvantage. Belmont is losing 40% of the households contributing to the PTA to Traverse, which already has a large and active PTA. Belmont can't afford that loss and Traverse doesn't need that game. These PTA members will have less impact and be of less or no help at Traverse. Furthermore, increasing the ratio of low-income households at Belmont will impact the long-term resilience of teachers and reduce the quality of learning environment at Belmont. Sociologically and statistically speaking, children from lower-income households have a higher likelihood to exhibit behavioral problems. A higher ratio of behavioral problems in the classroom will result in a lower-quality learning environment. This impacts teacher resilience in the long term. It's better for the whole if such behavioral discipline burden is evenly spread through the district and between schools. The boundary split disproportionately increases the burden of behavioral discipline out in Belmont. Creating cultural and economic overlap helps foster compassion, empathy, unity, and inclusion within society. The district should make sure that, starting at a young age, such ideas are fostered and that the burdens of socioeconomic disparities are distributed. The existing boundary map does not achieve these goals. It does achieve a more balanced overall student population distribution between the schools. However, this primary goal could be also achieved by splitting the boundary in another way which wouldn't disadvantage Belmont. Adding the west side, Pilgrim's Landing, to Traverse would more evenly distribute the socioeconomic spectra, behavioral burden, and allow Belmont to maintain the much-needed PTA support it currently has. The LDS church, seeing the struggles that those apartment puts on others who are more able to help out, split those apartments into various wards in order to not only see that those in the apartments are getting the support they need, but also for the benefit of those who are in a place where they can be of service to those in the apartments. In my mind, this flows into the education system as well. I know that there are difficult students everywhere, however, they seem to be tenfold coming from that area. I've had some amazing students that I adore in this particular housing, however, I've had some students who have pushed me to the edge of my teacher sanity. As a whole, this seems to be more prevalent than the latter. And I would add that at Belmont, we're so blessed to have a leader like Misty Rocha who does what she can do, and this has nothing at all to do with leadership. This has to do with sharing the wonderful, the good, the bad, and the most difficult situations that often those apartments add to our plates. These kids need and deserve a great education, they need and deserve to feel loved and accepted, and teachers in turn deserve to not be overwhelmed with behaviors and other issues that unfortunately have a history of falling into our laps from the apartments over by Thanksgiving point. So, if there is any possible way to have Belmont and Traverse as well, like, take just a second and... and have a new decision for the next coming school year instead of implementing it for this twenty-twenty-two, sorry, excuse me, twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four school year, implement it to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, I'm also very short like others here. All right, I'm Jamie Larkin and I have been with Alpine School District as a teacher for fifteen years. And I've been a specialty teacher at Windsor for the last thirteen. I've been able to see a lot of positive changes and growth in the time that I've been at Windsor. And I feel that Windsor is doing amazing things and I believe that we will continue to excel if you allow us to remain open for many years. Some of my concerns with a lot of these changes are creating endless larger and larger school enrollments and overcrowding and also all of our various programs being preserved. Additionally, from my employee perspective, we have all been through a pretty extreme emotional roller coaster. We've had very limited information to try and make well-informed career decisions for our own personal lives as well as trying to maintain a commitment to our students. And I believe the district has been extremely helpful and has tried their best to answer questions, but a lot of the questions are just unknown or they have not been able to answer them, or we've gotten a lot of confusing information. In just a few weeks, we have had a lot of different, very viable options come forward for all of the different areas. And so I would encourage you in any future endeavors, please trust the people and involve the people at each school in coming up with solutions from the very beginning to find what is best for the education of the kids in those specific areas before causing the chaos. I am very grateful for more time if Plan D is voted on and I'm hopeful with the words in the agenda, possible implementation, so that we can hopefully have a lot more years for our schools. I appreciated comments from a board member that acknowledged that there were many things that should have been considered or that weren't understood fully prior to voting to expedite the timeline. I did not, however, appreciate the comment that it was too fast-moving of a train to stop it. Yes, not everything obviously can be undone to what it was before, but if changes do have to be made, I certainly would hope that we want the absolute best and long-term plan for our amazing Alpine kids and the programs, even if it means stopping the fast-moving train. Thank you.
Wow, very, very serious meeting we've had going so far. I just want to say thank you, everybody who's passionately stepped up here, expressed our viewpoints, board. I appreciate everyone, every single one of you. I want to see a few of you smile though, there's too many, too many serious faces up here. I also want to apologize that, you know, kind of like in that last period of the school day, the teacher says, hey, I'm gonna let you out early, but anybody else have any questions? I'm so sorry, but I got triple dog dared, so I had to get up here. But on a serious note, I'm a, I'm a huge supporter of the Windsor Elementary School. I, while I did not go to that school, I am a Bonneville Bronco, yeah. Okay, just me. But I have four kids currently in that school right now, pretty much one in almost every grade we offer right now. And it's only a stone's throw from my house, so yes, it's very, very important to me right now that we revisit this whole decision and this, this train like we were just talking about. Let's slow it down. We can actually make it come to a stop. That's totally possible. Preferably, we don't want it to come to a stop with a brick wall or anything, but it's something that we actually take hold of the brakes and let's, let's give this a pump the brake. Give us a chance as parents to go ahead and give us options. Don't just say, hey, this is what we're gonna do, we're gonna close it. I'm sorry, there's not much else we can do. I know you guys have important decisions to make. I know they're based on the stats and the things that you guys have that I don't. But I also know that we can also have options as parents to be able to say, hey, what can we do to save this school? And that's what we'd like to see as parents. What can we do to save each one of our schools? If at the end, we've done all that we can and you've given us every option in the world to do so, it still comes down, then it might have to shut down, I concede. I'll buy it. But I don't feel like we get, we were given that opportunity. I felt like it was kind of shoved in front of us for whatever reasons, quite frankly, I don't care, they're irrelevant. But I would like a chance to save it, fundraising, whatever. I have no idea what options are out there, but I'm willing to jump onboard this train and I'm willing to put my foot right in front of it and to try to slow it down myself. I know we as people here, we all elected you to make some of these hard decisions. We did. And they're hard. That's just by nature of you guys running for this. But now we, the people, are all asking you to pump the brakes on this. And let's slow this, this down. Again, thank you for all that you've done. You've done the best you can. You'll continue to give it your all. I have no doubt in my mind. If you didn't, you wouldn't have run for this, these offices. So thank you, but please, save our community, save our Windsor.
Hi, I'm Ashley McKinnon. I live at one sixty-eight north, three hundred west in Lehigh. I didn't come here expecting to say anything, so thank you for the opportunity. I don't have my thing written down or a fancy statement or anything like that, but I wanted to fight for Lehigh Elementary. I just wanted it to have representation here tonight because Lehigh Elementary is super special. It's a very interesting school with a dynamic student body with many different things. We have many different ethnicities, races, economic and, there's just a lot of different kids and parents and teachers and administration that are there that care so deeply about Lehigh Elementary. In fact, I've talked to a few of the teachers and even our school librarian who were very concerned about what was gonna happen to their jobs when Lehigh Elementary closed. I talked to our librarian and she was actually headed to go to a job interview for one opportunity to become the next librarian at a different school, which was, there were five other librarians that were also going for that same, for that same job. And she, she's a treasure and she should have a job. And so it just broke my heart for her and it broke my heart for all of our teachers and also other teachers at the other school. I talked to teachers at Meadow Elementary and River Rock Elementary that are going to be gaining the Lehigh Elementary students and there were teachers there that were worried about their jobs too. And so it, it is a huge impact on the kids and I just feel like we didn't get the opportunity to see why. I understand Lehigh Elementary is old. My kids have been there, been going there for thirteen years and I have a kindergartner that will be going there in 2025, hopefully. And I served as PTA president in Lehigh Elementary. I've served on the, the PTA for thirteen years. I've directed four musicals at that school, like my heart and soul is in Lehigh Elementary. And when I told my three other children, my three oldest children that Lehigh Elementary was gonna close, they actually shed tears. They were, they were completely devastated by that. I know Lehigh Elementary has its issues. I know that we have a hard time keeping full-time employment there. I know that we have some seismic issues and things like that, but I live in a hundred and forty-year-old house. I know my foundation is sound because it's insured and an insurance agent said that it can, it can be lived in. We can save these elementaries. That elementary, I, I was the PTA president when it was the fiftieth anniversary and that was just a few years ago. It is not that old. So I would love to see those studies. I'd love to see the information as to why these things are happening and I agree with what, what Joe said, that we can bring the, the different programs, the ALL programs, the DLI, DLI? DLI programs. I went to a DLI program in Meadow, at Meadow Elementary and it changed my life. So if we could bring those programs to Lehigh Elementary, find some way to save it, I just wanted to be a voice for Lehigh Elementary because sometimes we just need to get up and say how much we care. So that's why I wanted to say something tonight. Thank you so much for your time and for your consideration.
Sorry, I'm a little short. I'm Leah McKnight and I have a seven, a seventh grade in Old Canyon. She has been to Rock Mountain the whole time, so I have been in the PTA for eight years in the Rock Mountain and have helped so much. And I have a third grade in Rock Mountain right now and one that's coming in, in fourth grade in the next year. And something that made me very sad throughout these plans is to see how the DOI Portuguese in Rock Mountain was always in second plan. Even in the last one, that it does stop Linden for, for being demolished, still you guys put more PG residence towards Linden, making next year being even worse for the DOI stay in Linden. Because more kids in Linden, making Linden bigger, more, more kids, there is no way we can combine. So I, when I look, I'm just so sad to see how you guys are treating this almost four hundred kids as a second option, as a person that doesn't need a school, that they can be like juggle around, like they don't need respect. My daughter, that's seventh grade, come back home crying because if she has to move to Junior High and in PG, she will lose all her friends. There is not a many Portuguese that would have to move with her, many won't. We especially move from middle arm to the north arm as, as we had opportunity. And we live really close to the school. My kids can walk to school and now you guys are asking me to drive five miles away to a new school. We know Aspen had had DOI before. We know it wasn't successful, so that just proved that not every school or every neighborhood or every boundary would be good for a DOI. I feel like what is good, we don't touch. What is broke, we fix. We don't go and broke what is good to then fix later. And moving to Manila, that would do, that would probably break. And then waiting to be, if it's gonna get fixed in a few years, it's not a good excuse. I'm sorry, but I feel like my kids need the respect as all their kids. I am Brazilian, but I am an American citizen. I vote and I'm here to fight for my kids' future. My husband is American and he knows also that Duolingo is important for us. And I have many neighbors that they are planning to put their kids in the DOI close by. Now they are like, I don't know if I can because they're moving. What if moves again? And it's so hard for us to plan our lives around this. I signed a contract saying that my kids were staying in the Rock Mountain for six years. We moved close by and you guys come and say, sorry, now, five miles away. And when that's gonna stop, are you guys gonna keep moving us? Are you guys gonna keep moving us as other schools need to be close because the west needs more schools? It's, it's very sad to me to see that DOI is just like a second option, a program that's not important. When these kids are thriving, when these kids are learning and they are very important. Also, you guys are wanting to, to make the DOI go to Manila when the majority of the program lives in Orem, Linden and PG. So Linden is the male, like in the middle of all. And so I feel like why making our Orem and Linden go to PG, especially the Linden citizens, when you guys are bringing PG to Linden? And so we feel really discouraged that you guys are not looking at us, that we are invisible to you. So I really hope you guys will see us as a good program, a program that wasn't created by the district. It was created for, for Utah. Utah has a DOI Portuguese board that create the program. So I hope you guys will talk to them and find a good solution and a good way to keep us all in our community. Thank you.
Okay, it is nearly nine o'clock. We need to begin our regular board meeting. So unless there is someone else who really has a need to speak, one more. Can we please make this the last?
Hi, thank you for allowing me this quick opportunity.
Please give us your name and.
Yes, my name is Chase Quinn. I live in Lehigh, Utah. I just wanted to first of all say thank you to all the people who are here to come to the review for your employees. And I would like to thank you, thank you for showing up to work. It's really important that you're here today. I just wanted to speak because I grew up in Eagle Mountain, Utah, a long time ago. And I was, this is back before schools were out there, so I was brought into Meadow Elementary, where I was a member of the Spanish immersion program from first grade to fourth grade. And I just wanted to testify that that is such an important program that has benefited me so strongly in my life as a college graduate now. We, we are a community who strives. We think that, we have, there's a sentiment in this community that our people are children of God. There is a sentiment that we want our kids to grow up and go out in the world and learn new languages and surround themselves with other cultures and become citizens of the globe with the rest of humanity. And it is so important that we can bring that to our kids close to home and start them while they're young. Kids who learn two languages when they are young, they have, they have the ability to learn more languages later on. There are statistics that show that they are better at shifting between tasks. They're better at multitasking. It just benefits them in such a great way. So I just want to say that as we're moving, if these are the things that are gonna come to pass in the district, we should really focus on keeping those specialized programs like that around. It would benefit not only the students who, who are of the racial and ethnic groups who, to whom those languages belong, but the students around them who benefit greatly from learning those languages and surrounding themselves with people who are not like them. I also just wanted to state that, I just, I started watching this from home. I had to drive here. And earlier there was mentioned by our people about threats of lawsuits. And it is just such a weird phenomenon to think that the people who are the district are trying to sue almost themselves because of decisions that are being made where they feel like they weren't involved to the proper level or degree that they're, they're requesting. I just think that we can do better as a community and as a people and I want, I wanted to take this opportunity to speak because I would like to be present for more of these. The people that are here, please come back because this is like an issue that's blown up and if people were here all the time helping the board make these kind of decisions along the way, it would really speak and we wouldn't feel like we're attacking so much as like collaborating. And I just think that that's really the spirit of things that we should get to in our community. I'm really grateful for our nation. I'm really grateful for Utah. I'm somebody who's proud to have grown up here and somebody who wants, I remember, real quick, two thousand and two, the Olympics happened when I was at Meadow Elementary and we were such a strong community of inviting the world to our, to our, to our state, to our community. And I just think that we should continue those endeavors in everything we do. Thank you.
I apologized to everybody in here. I wasn't planning on getting up.
Give us your name and address, please.
Linden Britner and I am in Orem, Utah. And I spoke a couple of months ago, but as I have listened to everybody in this room tonight, everybody seems to be on the same page. Very, very common thread in all of the comments that have been made tonight. The one thing that I keep reflecting on though, is I don't think that we're addressing the problems that the district has. The district has some very deep problems right now and I don't envy any of you sitting up there having to, to solve these problems because I think we're at a point where maybe these problems are not solvable. If I look what's happened over the past few years over the bond, you, you, we're now in a position where the school board, district can no longer bond. And, and we all know that general obligation bonds is the way to go and not lease revenue bonds. So you, you've got a, a revenue problem here that, that you can't solve. The voters aren't gonna give you bonds anymore. So I think, and during this whole two years, you've lost, lost the confidence of the voters. Now you've lost the confidence of the, of the families and the PTAs and, and the other groups that, that, that work with you and that you're supposed to represent. It would seem be, it would seem to become obvious to me, well, it has been obvious for a while and I think others are waking up, that rather than looking at what schools that you should be closing, maybe you should be looking and studying splitting the district. And that may not be what you want to hear. But it, I don't see any other solutions to these problems. Now if you will take the time and, and, and put your efforts on, on studying a split, then you get to do it on your terms. But if you don't do it, then it's gonna be done on someone else's terms, whether it's the voter's terms, well, or the city's terms or whatever. So I, I, I don't, I think everybody would love for everybody to, to cooperate and discussion and discuss splitting so that we can know that it's done in a proper way. But, but I know you've lost the support of, of most of the mayors. But I know you've lost the support of most of the mayors. You've lost the support of the lawmakers at this point. So I'm not exactly sure you're, what you're hanging on to at this point because you're grasping at straws and you're heading down a path that's just, that's just not gonna get anyone anywhere. So I would just urge you to back off on all of these school closures. Let's take a look into a split and let's let the new districts make these decisions on whether these schools should remain open or be closed because we need to get a governance closer to the people. And that's just not what we have at this point. Thank you.
I think, Cindy, we really have to make this the last comment because we do have a board meeting and a closed session still to come.
I was not going to speak. I'll be really brief. Gosh, I'm so impressed with all of these people who have spoken today and all of you for listening and the patience. I just have heard a lot of people speak about splitting the district. I'm a parent in the district, and I would say that if you do study and do that, just please do it with a lot of information. And I think some people wanna have smaller representation, smaller groups. There are pros and cons, so sometimes we need to be aware of the pros and cons. I also don't wanna pay the same to get less, I don't wanna pay more to get the same or less, which with our current property assessed values per capita, we're at the lowest or near the lowest in the state. So when you have to look at the financial realities, please just make sure we're really transparent. Also, our size helps us to incentivize new teachers to come here. It's a drawing point. But again, a smaller district could be more nimble. So there are pros and cons, but I just ask you to be very open with your information as a parent so that we can seriously weigh the pros and cons and see the big financial picture and representation picture and health insurance picture and all of the things. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. At this point, I declare the public hearing closed. Thank you all for coming. We will be fairly soon starting our regular board meeting. You're welcome to stay or you're welcome to leave, whatever suits your schedule best.
Julie, you have motion?
Yes, Board President Hacken, I move that we recess for 15 minutes.
Okay, do I hear a second? Just do 10.
Okay, 10. I'll amend it to 10. There's gonna be a line for the bathroom.
Do we have a second? Has it been a second?
I second a 15-minute break.
Sir, you gotta vote.
It's been motion by Julie, seconded by Julie, that we adjourn for 10 minutes. All in favor, say yes. 10, 10 minutes. 10 minutes, 10 after, 10 after.
10, 10.
I didn't hear a call for a vote.
I did. I said, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
10 minutes.
Okay, we're going to start tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance and that will be led by Craig Brinkerhoff. So if you'd come forward, if you'd all stand please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know if you can hear from where you're sitting, can you hear how wonderful that sounds? I love doing the Pledge of Allegiance with a big group because it is just absolutely inspiring every time. We are going to move ahead without an inspirational thought or reflection because we've been reflecting for the last three hours. And we have been inspired. So we're going to move right into community comments. And we have five community comments that have been signed up for. And please start by of course stating your name. You will have three minutes to speak and this is not a discussion between the board and people in the comments. It's time for us to listen. So let's start with Gabrielle.
My name's Alex. I was crossed off at the beginning, but I'm back at the top. But Gabby's next, so we can look forward to that. That's okay.
I wasn't sure about that.
Yeah, that's just fine.
Alex, you go right ahead.
Yeah, my name's Alex Lamrow. I live in Saratoga Springs. Thanks for being here tonight. I had no idea I was going to be here tonight for three hours, but I love the passion. I am switching gears, so I appreciate your time and attention and hopefully we'll be able to get some of the same passion for these issues. But I'm speaking tonight as a mother of three, an Alpine School District alum, Go Pioneers, licensed social worker and spokesperson for dozens of like-minded and concerned community members. We wish to express with urgency our desire to make our schools safer and more secure for all students, staff, and families. The recent tragedy in Nashville and other schools have been the result of sleepless nights, anxious concern, and a deep regret for myself personally for not taking action sooner. Alas, all I can do is move forward and take action today. Ultimately, I believe we all have the same goal, to provide the best possible education and experience for our students. As a stakeholder in this issue, I attended a school community council meeting at my child's elementary school last week to educate myself on measures currently being taken at his school specifically. I have communicated with Board Member Eric Woodhouse to gain a foundational understanding of district-wide measures currently in place. He initially referred me back to my individual school administration who pointed me back towards the district. As a parent, my faith is wavering that leadership is willing to engage with me in meaningful change and not just settle for status quo. I've had many productive and engaging conversations with other parents, teachers, school staff, and district employees, and I deeply appreciate the efforts made by the district thus far. It's my understanding that ultimately it is a lack of designated funding, not desire, that is the critical missing piece in improving the safety of our school students and staff. I would like to propose a stringent budget reevaluation for providing increased security in our schools. I understand the issue is nuanced and complex. However, we must take actionable steps to protect our children and staff. Our district is large and facing budget restrictions, but we cannot allow tight finances to come before the security of our students, staff, and community. None of this other stuff matters if our kids and our teachers aren't safe. We need to develop a strategic plan for spending and make an effort to ensure the safety of our district is paramount. As community members, we are insistent on finding ways to reallocate existing school budgets to prioritize safety and mitigate risk. Avenues to explore may include safety measures such as improved surveillance, employment of security staff in each school, ballistic protections, as well as professional hands-on training for all school staff. These explorations are imperative in our fight to reduce the risk of violence and danger to our children. It's my belief that with proper budget reworking, Alpine School District can become a leading example of what it looks like to be proactive rather than reactive to security incidents. I am currently attempting to get in contact with my local city officials. If anyone's here from Saratoga Springs, if you could email me back, that'd be great. And I hope to get your support in advocating for comprehensive support and collaboration from local city government in meeting these needs. These are only a few potential solutions, and I'm confident that a collaborative effort between professional school administrators like yourselves and passionate parents and community members can create solutions to meet our budgetary and safety needs. While many of these suggested changes can't happen immediately, there are common sense solutions I believe could be implemented today with little to no cost. First and foremost, the assurance from the board that our schools are adhering to existing policy and procedures. We should be taking measures to ensure current safety and security policies are followed and updated to meet the individual needs of our schools. Perhaps each school should have a designated staff member in charge of overseeing and making sure policies are enforced. This would be a reassuring good faith effort to show that our children's safety is being taken seriously regardless of inconvenience, perceived overkill, or monotony. I have connected with dozens of parents who are ready and willing to volunteer their time, fundraise, and work together to assist the district with the financial demands of these suggestions. We have to work together in order to make this happen, and there's an opportunity to bridge the gap between concerned parents and school board officials. I'm confident that we're willing to step up to the plate to do what needs to be done and to enact positive and productive change. I ask the board to join me and others in committing to the safety and security of our district and doing whatever it takes to invest in the resources necessary to achieve this goal. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Gabrielle? I would like to encourage people to stay within the time limit considering the lateness of the hour. And there's quite a few things on the agenda tonight, so it would help us a lot if you could stay within three minutes, please.
I'm short and sweet, so that'll make up for her time. My name's Gabrielle Johnson. I'm a former K-12 Alpine School District student. Also dual immersion, but that's not why I'm here. For the last 10 years, I focused much of my attention as a nurse at Primary Children's Hospital, taking care of critically ill children. But I'm also a mother of three, and as my first has started kindergarten at Thunder Ridge Elementary School, it's time to focus my attention on them and do my due diligence in ensuring her safety as well as the other children in our community. With every school shooting, I've become more and more concerned that her school could be next. I'm hoping to collaborate with the district on implementing plans to make our schools safer. I'm specifically hoping to get an armed guard at every school. Many schools do this, and I think it would be beneficial, if not at least, to deter any major threats. If money is an issue, which I have a feeling that would be the answer, I'd like to ask how we can cut wasteful spending and where we can relocate funds to prioritize safety as well as providing the district's budget in layman's terms that we can understand to find out where the money is going and where we can reallocate funds if we need to. Lastly, how are we enforcing school entry policies? While the locked entries at the elementary schools are a great step, they aren't serving their full potential if the people behind them aren't fully screening who comes in and following the policies set in place. I would love to hear back from you about what the district is currently doing to make schools more safe beyond current measures. I think we could be frontrunners in the state if we pursue active plans to better protect our schools. Thank you.
Next, Breon, you. Did I say your name right?
Good enough. Okay, so I want to talk about something actually controversial, the calendar. So as both a teacher and a parent, I have a couple comments about the calendar and then totally unrelated to the calendar. First of all, please don't change our Wednesdays. We love Wednesday early outs. As both a mom and a teacher, those Wednesday early days are heaven for our family. They are the break in the week where my kids can breathe and take a little break and finish strong. So that's my first comment. Second is this next school year, there is a teacher workday on December 22nd. There is not a single teacher who wants that workday on the day before Christmas break. We would rather just have the day or move it to January at the beginning of the new semester. I know that calendar is already set in stone, but just as a comment. The 2024 calendar, or 2425 calendar, I just had a question why our teacher workday isn't connected to President's Day. I realized that that would put it on Valentine's Day, and every teacher in the district would thank you for not having students in our classes on Valentine's Day. I would rather spend my day at the school doing PD than have 7th, 8th, and 9th graders handing out Valentines. So that's my comments about the calendar. Now, one other thing related kind of to school safety, and this actually goes right with what you were talking about during study session. Social emotional wellness is one of the best tactics, I guess is the best way to say it, for deterring threats. If we take care of our kids' needs, they aren't bringing guns to school. One of the things that we talk about often in education is what we call Maslow Before Bloom. We have to address the kids' Maslow hierarchy of needs before we get to Bloom's taxonomy. And for those of you that aren't teachers, don't worry about it. You don't need to know. It's not a big deal. But Maslow's hierarchies, they need to feel safe. They need their physiological needs met. We can't meet their physiological needs a lot of the time. Even when we offer breakfast and lunch at school, that's not something we can do. We can't make their home safe. We can't make their family life ideal. We can't do those things. So we do the best we can, but the second is their safety needs. Do they feel safe and secure? The third is do they have a sense of belonging? Do they belong in our schools? And I would say we have a lot of work to do in that area. Fourth, are there esteem needs? Do they feel respect? Do they feel appreciation? And then fifth is self-actualization. I think we're all still working on that one. I think that's a lifelong process, right? But I think that it's really important that we take those needs and we address those needs as well. It's not a socialist agenda. It's not an idea. We need social emotional wellness. Thank you.
Thank you, Breon. Rob? Rob is next, and after Rob, Michelle? Rob? That's you. Come on up.
I don't start my time yet. I run to the mic. I'll do my best. This is a picture of chicken wire windows. Look to the side, you'll see there's chicken wire in those windows at the district office and out there to go in. Chicken wire in the windows. Now, why would that be? Safety? Now, if you go to our elementary schools, and I'm here to talk about school safety, so and specifically for the elementary schools, I know that high schools have their own open campus challenges, and I'm not here to try to solve that. I have a simple one piece of the solution, and I'd like to propose that we put in chicken wire protected windows in our entry doors and windows. I was sad to see in the national shooting, when the gunman came, you saw them shoot out the windows of the door that was locked and crawl right in under the door bar to the school. And that was heartbreaking because I couldn't help but wonder if they'd had some kind of protected window with some chicken wire. Would that have slowed them down? Perhaps would that have stopped them? Now, my children are attending Fox Hollow Elementary School, wonderful school. And they just built this area where you come in and you have to buzz into the office to get into the school, and I love it. That's great. But I was a little bit disappointed when I saw that that got done and all the windows are just regular glass. And if there's a school shooter, we just saw it, they can shoot that glass out and come right into the school. So my thinking is, why don't we do something simple at least? It won't solve everything. I'm not here to solve it all. Would you please take up an order to see if we can replace the windows in our doors and in the offices going in, at least in the elementary schools, with chicken wire? I am sure that we could raise the money, at least in Fox Hollow on a school-by-school basis. I know we could raise the money if that was an issue to do that. And I think that could provide some nice additional safety and a little extra discomfort as parents as we send our kids to school every day. Thank you for your time. Minute and a half, minute forty.
Thank you, Rob. Next, Michelle Bruck, and then Kenny Sperry.
Hi, I wanted to make the comment I wanted to make in March. But it doesn't have to be very long, and I already submitted it online, so maybe you have already read it, but there's been a lot of comments online. I work with a group called KG. And in March, it was Developmental Disability Month, and so I talked with a couple of organizations that advocate for students with developmental disabilities, and we discovered two ways that maybe Alpine School District could start planning to better meet those needs. The one that I loved that I mentioned first is a parent who runs a neurodiversity clinic in American Fork suggested that we look into training for at least one employee in middle schools and high schools. By somebody, Doctors Peg Dawson and Richard Guar, they're authors of the Smart But Scattered book. And it would be a way for us to help students who are struggling with executive functioning, to train them and give them skills for that, because in middle school and high school it gets hard. And I have ADHD and I struggled with that, but we're smart, but we struggle with that. And so then the other thing that I heard a lot about from parents and from organization that we talked to was that we're hoping that Alpine School District would be willing to put together something for parents, a town hall, something, an event where parents could go and ask questions about how to apply for an IEP or a 504 and how to navigate that with their child and if their child would qualify or if they wouldn't. And I wonder if you guys already have something that you do like that? I know that on March 11th, Utah Parent Center did an event at Lee High School, I think. I didn't get to go to that. I didn't hear about it in time. But if you have something like that, just email me, let me know, and I will let parents know that that's coming up and we'll advocate for parents to attend that. So those are the things I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenny, Kenny Sperry?
Hello, I am also here to talk about safety in our schools. I understand you guys are probably exhausted, so I'll try and be quick. I also came to open up a conversation that hopefully we can start having with citizens and also our elementary schools specifically, like many others here. My goal is to work together with the district to create an open dialogue on what we can better do to secure our schools from potential future violent acts, specifically active shooter situations. I wanted to highlight a few facts from past school shootings across the nation. In the recent disaster at the Covenant School in Tennessee, the teachers had comprehensive active shooter training and responded accordingly. No bullet resistance windows, and the shooter entered through a shot-out glass door. There were six fatalities. Officers eliminated the threat within 14 minutes of first report. On the contrary, Sandy Hook Elementary, there was no reported active shooter training for educators. The entrance had a buzzed security system similar to the systems that we have in our schools, and the shooter shot through that system and entered the school through a shot-out door. Police responded within five minutes after the first 911 call. And from time of police response was five minutes, and there were 26 fatalities. The shooter that ended up at Covenant was deterred from their original target due to increased security at their original target. I have been in contact with multiple teachers within the district that feel the training for these situations has been poor. They feel unprepared, worried, and concerned about a similar local threat. I have had vendors that work within our schools, in our district, that I have been in contact with that are stressing that there are gaps within our system's school security. Simple steps such as removing gun-free zone signs, having parent volunteer stand halls, along with other simple items I feel could be quickly implemented without the need of an increased budget for these factors. I've been in contact with affordable ballistic solutions companies that have an existing contract with the state of Utah and have done work in the Jordan School District and have many affordable options with helping secure specifically the front doors of our schools. I think this is a dynamic situation that needs the involvement of parents, educators, and the district to work together towards that charge. Thank you.
It appears that many of the comments tonight were about school safety. And I would just like to mention that we have been working on that for the last three years in rebuilding front entrances, installing cameras, changing locks on doors. And Eric Woodhouse is now in charge of school safety, so if you have some specific concerns, we would encourage you to talk to Eric. And to be assured that we feel the same way you do on this, our hearts would just sink if we had an active shooter at one of our schools and we weren't prepared. So our hearts are with you on this one for sure. Okay, let's move on to the business of the meeting. First thing we need to do is approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Motion by Julie, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Julie, seconded by Sarah to approve the minutes. Are there any comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Any opposed, say nay? Okay, that passes. Dr. Farnsworth, claims?
Yes, you have received your claims for the month, and I recommend your acceptance of the claims.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the claims.
I move that we approve the claims.
Okay. Motion by Stacy. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Julie. Do we have any comments on the claims? In that case, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Okay, motion passes.
Yes, you have received your routine business for the month, board members, and I recommend your acceptance of the routine business.
Do I have a motion to accept the routine business?
A motion that we accept routine business.
Okay, motion by Ada. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Sarah. Do we have any comments? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the routine business, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Okay, passes. See, we're moving right along, guys. Now, the action items. That's what you're all waiting for, aren't you? All right, first one, 2024-25 school calendar. Dr. Farnsworth?
Yes, I invite David Stevenson, Executive Director of Communications and External Relations, to come forward. The board had a chance in a previous board meeting to look at calendar options. And David, I would recommend, well, I would recommend your approval of the calendar after we have an opportunity to discuss that, and David could review those options that are available.
Thank you, Superintendent. Great to be here with you tonight, board members. Yes, at the last board meeting, we presented the two options. Just a reminder, we had a committee with a few parents, teachers. We had representatives from AEA. We had two students and a couple of administrators. So it was a great committee. We looked at this calendar. The nice thing about this calendar year is that Christmas and New Year's fall on Wednesdays. And so, as we mentioned at the last board meeting, the number-one priority, as we have done previous surveys, is a full two-week Christmas break with three weekends. So we're excited that this calendar will accomplish that, whether it's option A or B. I will point out the differences between the two. Calendar A, school starts on August 15th and ends on May 23rd, which is before Memorial Day. And that is one of the top priorities on previous surveys also. One of only two differences between these calendars is option B, school starts on August 21st and ends on June, or excuse me, June, May 30th. So that is after Memorial Day. And the other difference is the days in March. The, boy, that's not very clear. The March 7th, and as was mentioned earlier, the Professional Development Day. I do want to point out that that was brought up as far as potential of having that Teacher Work Day on February 14th. And it was actually discussed that the majority of kids actually maybe liked to go to school that day. And so... I was trying to be very careful in how I said that, Brianna. And finally, I would just add that not just the majority, but all of the committee members liked option A the most, just because it gets us out of school before Memorial Day.
Do I have a motion to adopt one of these calendars?
I move to adopt option A of the 24-25 school calendar.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, is there any discussion? Since you moved, do you like to comment? Any discussion by anyone on the board? Seeing none, then let's take a vote. All in favor of option A, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Option A is right before Memorial Day. Okay, next.
Okay, we will invite David to stay there. The first action item we have is the boundary adjustment for Belmont and Traverse Mountain Elementary Schools. And we have had the open houses, had the public hearing for that. And so I would invite David to share our recommendation on that boundary adjustment.
Thank you. So we have the two boundary adjustments, which are action items two and three. Just a quick overview, and I'm sure most of everyone you've been on this website. This is the Boundary Adjustment Study website. It has the public hearing notice. I think, based on the number of folks that showed up, that went out, and people were noticed. It also has tonight's agenda. It has a timeline as far as different things that we've done throughout this study period. As we've heard, on December 8th, an email was sent out to all parents throughout the district and mayors and city councils. And then on February 28th, there was the board meeting. And then on March 1st, another email was sent out with the specific closures and so forth. We also held six open houses. We had originally scheduled five, but we added that last one at Sharon and Windsor. And there are those open houses. We appreciate everyone who came to those open houses. Things were very civil, and just appreciate the comments that we received at those. Each section of the boundary options have maps, and then also a button or a QR code to submit feedback. And we received 1,430, I believe it was, at last count, 1,430 individual comments. Okay, now just to move specifically to the superintendent's request that I get here. Belmont-Traverse Mountain. We have the two maps there. You can see those. And the only difference between the two is the... Okay, help me out. What's the neighborhood called? Violetto? Violetto, which is in this area right here. So that area would go to Traverse with this boundary change, and it would stay at Belmont here. And then a slight variation down here. On the... Do you want me to just talk about this one for now, Superintendent? Okay. Any questions, comments here?
Yes. David, could you review the timing on this? I know we've completed the open houses, the public hearing for that. We have a recommendation. And then the board could take action as of what?
Yeah, so February 6th is when the notification went to these parents after that December, originally December 8th. So if you're going from that February 6th date, then that would be, 120 days would be June 6th, roundabout.
So a recommendation could be made at this time, or the board could discuss that, and then official action would be taken at a later time.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt one of these plans?
I move that we continue through the process per State Code 53G-440221 with boundary adjustment for Belmont and Traverse Mountain Elementary Schools for the 23-24 school year.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Comments, Stacy? Okay, all in favor of moving ahead then with these boundary adjustments, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion passes. All right, next.
Next item is a boundary adjustment in the Greenwood, Forbes, and Barrett area. And David, if you could go through that same process, just consider explaining what we're processing through there and what the current status of that recommendation is.
Sure. The Boundary Committee ended up with just this one boundary map option for this area. You can see here that Greenwood, with no change, would be at 927, and by 2027, they would be at 1,068. And that building doesn't have the capacity for that number of students. And so that's why we've initiated the process for this boundary change. Same date, February 6th, is when that notice went out.
And this is the recommendation from the committee?
Yes, yes.
Okay, do I hear a motion about the boundary adjustment for Barrett, Forbes, and Greenwood Elementarys?
I move that we continue the process per State Code 53G-440221 with the proposed boundary adjustment for the Barrett, Forbes, and Greenwood Elementary Schools for the 2023-2024 school year.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Comments? Okay, seeing none, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Thank you. The motion carries. Next.
Okay, the next item is the recommendation to continue study of the formal boundary enclosure study recommendations associated with Valley View Elementary School for intended implementation in the 2023-2024 school year.
Okay, so here we go. We have, as has been talked about this evening, we have four options that close Valley View Elementary. We've reviewed option A, B, C, and the current option D, which would leave Linden open. I know there's overlap here. Would put all of Valley View at Central. It would take this area of Central and move them to Grovecrest. It would take this section, Apple Grove, I believe, have them go to Linden. And then this arm of the Linden boundary and have that reboundary to Aspen. Am I on the right one?
Okay, do I hear a motion to continue the study of the formal boundary enclosure recommendations associated with Valley View Elementary?
I move that we continue through the process outlined in State Code 53G-440221 for the proposed closure impacting Valley View Elementary and the associated boundary adjustments to Grovecrest, Central, Aspen, and Linden Elementary Schools for the implementation in the 2023-2024 school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Julie and seconded by Joy Lynn. Are there any comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes.
Next item is the continued study of the formal boundary enclosure study recommendations associated with Sharon Elementary School for intended implementation in the 2023-2024 school year.
Similar to the last study, we have four options for this area with the closure of Sharon. The first three options, split Sharon to Foothill and Cascade. The option D, the reason we only show this map is because it only impacts Sharon and Centennial and Cascade. So this would take all of Sharon Elementary and place them at Cascade. And then it would take this section from Cascade and place them at Centennial. And that is option D.
Do I have a motion to continue the study of the formal boundary enclosure recommendations associated with Sharon Elementary for intended implementation 23-24 school year?
I move that we continue through this process outlined in State Code 53G-440221 for the proposed closure impacting Sharon Elementary and the associated boundary adjustments to Cascade and Centennial Elementary Schools for the implementation in the 23-24 school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. A motion by Ada and a second by Joy Lynn. Are there any comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Okay, motion passes. Superintendent?
Yes, the next item is item number six. We recommend the continued study of the formal boundary enclosure study recommendations associated with Windsor Elementary School for possible implementation in the 24-25 school year or future school years.
Okay, and so obviously, those Windsor is part of options A, B, and C in this study. And so obviously, if it moves to the 24-25 school year, we'll probably look at new maps.
Yeah, our intention, I believe, is to continue to study, look at these options. There are some variables there that we want additional time to consider to make further recommendations to the board.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to continue study of the formal boundary enclosure recommendations associated with Windsor Elementary School for possible implementation 24-25 or future school years? Do I have a motion?
I move that we continue the process per State Code 53G-440221 for the proposed closures impacting Windsor Elementary and associated boundary adjustments to Northridge and Orchard Elementary School for implementation in the 2024-2025 school year.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Thank you.
By Joy Lynn and seconded by Sarah. Is there any comment?
Point of clarification, the item listed says that school year or beyond. Your motion is for specifically for the 24-25 school year?
Do you wish to reword that?
No. If we need to revisit that during the 24-25 school year, we can.
Okay, in that case, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Next item is...
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
I was a nay. My apologies.
Is Mark online? His name is there, but is he tuned in?
I voted aye. Did you hear me?
Okay, Mark voted aye, so it does pass. Okay, I'm number seven.
Yes, this item is the continued study of the formal boundary enclosure study recommendations associated with Linden Elementary School for possible implementation in the 2024-2025 or future school year.
Do I have a motion to continue study for the formal boundary enclosure recommendations associated with Linden Elementary for possible implementation 24-25 or future school years?
I move that we continue the process per State Code 53G-440221 for the proposed closure impacting Linden Elementary and associated boundary adjustments to Rocky Mountain, Central, and Aspen Elementary Schools for implementation in the 2024-2025 school year.
Do I have a second? Okay, it's been moved by Julie. Or is there any comment first?
So I believe that, just to be clear, a yes vote on this means that we delay any implementation till the 24-25 school year. A no means that we revert back to our previous vote to move forward for the 23-24 school year. Is that your understanding?
Yes, I believe that's correct. Okay, that's... Oh, it's not correct? Okay, Rob, would you like to clarify?
Board member Clement, if this motion fails, you would need a new motion.
So if this motion fails... So if this motion fails, then, what do you mean? You'd need another motion because we can't just stay with the status quo?
Rob, point of clarification?
I would defer if Craig wants to weigh in. But if this motion fails, you need a new motion on the table to move forward with a closure.
Why would we need a new motion on the table? We're still within the 120 days of the motion that was made in February.
I would defer to legal, but that's the way I see the motion. If this motion fails, you would need a new motion.
Let's, should we take a vote, and then if it fails, Craig weighs in? Or would it be wisely to have him weigh in now? Craig, come on up and tell us, give us some advice.
Point of order, parliamentarian, I have a question. So on number six, who made the motion on number six? Can you vote against something that you moved? Okay, that's my point, my question, thanks.
So with regards to the prior motion, I do believe that Joylyn's motion is currently standing, but at the same time, there's no harm in making an additional motion to make it clear what the plan is and what the intent is. That might be a good idea for clarity.
Stay there, Craig. We'll vote, and then we may need to talk again. Okay, it has been moved by Julie and seconded by Stacy that we continue the study for the formal boundary enclosure recommendations associated with Linden Elementary for possible implementation 24-25 or future school, no, you just said 24-25 school year. That is the motion. Okay, any comment on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
So Craig, can you help us with what a no vote means and what a yes vote means?
A no vote, in my opinion, would keep things status quo as they are currently. A yes vote would approve whatever the motion is.
Correct.
So a no vote would mean that the closure in the 23-24 year would, is the current status quo, is that correct?
That's what is currently on the table, or what the last motion addressed, yes.
I believe the study would continue for possible implementation in 23-24.
Correct. No approval currently has been made on that.
If this motion does not pass, what, the conditions that we are currently under were continued study for possible implementation in 23-24.
Of the current year, correct.
A yes vote means moving it to 24-25.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion, as it was presented by Julie, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, Mark is an aye, all opposed?
Yes.
Nay.
Okay, let's do an oral vote then, Ada.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
And Mark was an aye.
Aye.
Then the motion passes.
The last item, action item, is the continued study of the formal boundary and closure study recommendations associated with Lehigh Elementary School for possible implementation in the 2024-2025 school year or future school years.
Do I hear a motion for the continued study of the formal boundary enclosure recommendations associated with Lehigh Elementary for possible implementation in 24 or 25 or future school years? Do I hear a motion?
I move that we continue the process per State Code 53G-4-40221 for the proposed closure impacting Lehigh Elementary and associated boundary adjustments to Meadow, North Point, River Rock, and Snow Springs Elementary for implementation in the 24-25 school year.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Stacy and seconded by Julie, is there any discussion? Now, the same rules still apply, okay? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Okay, that one's unanimous. All right, Dr. Farnsworth.
Yes, you've received your membership report for the month of March, the April 1st enrollment report. As you review that, I would just highlight some changes of, those constant changes of growth in those high-growth areas, and some continued decline in other areas.
Thank you, Dr. Farnsworth. Are there any board member or superintendent reports at this time?
I just want to talk about full-day kindergarten for just a second, 344, what was the bill? So just to clarify a couple things, we've been hearing both all-day kindergarten and full-day kindergarten, so House Bill 477 does refer to it as full-day kindergarten, so that is the term henceforth. We shall refer to the event in which children go to kindergarten for full day. So full-day K is our new term. Also, just to add a little bit of clarification, I know we've got schools that are wondering when they're going to hear, and I think we can anticipate that decision being made early next week and communicate it out next week. So I want to thank the public for their patience as we work through those things, and we'll be sharing that soon.
Thank you. Any other board member reports? We heard several in study session, but if there's any committee reports you'd like to share? Okay, if not, we have need of a closed session. Do I hear a motion to move into closed session?
I move that we move into closed session.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Sarah and seconded by Ada.
Can you give us a little more clear on where we go from there, like what the final vote is and what the speed?
On which?
What your motion is actually meant. Yeah, because we don't understand.
We have a motion on the table, let's finish that motion, and then we are going to adjourn into closed session, perhaps we can talk to you between the sessions. Well, we have a motion on the table that we need to, we need to finish. So we need to, we need to finish that. Yes, non-debatable motion. So at this point, we need a roll call vote on moving into closed session. Would you please state your name and your vote?
Board Member Wilson, aye.
Joylyn Lincoln, aye.
Board Member King, aye.
Board Member Hacken, aye.
Board Member Beeson, aye.
Board Member Bateman, aye.
Okay, at this point, we are going to adjourn...
Board Member Clement, aye.
Oh, pardon, Mark? Sorry, Mark?
Board Member Clement, aye.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, at this point, we are going to adjourn this meeting and move into closed session.